We are ready to begin.
Great, thank you. I call, let's see, the time is now 6:03 PM and I call to order the Northborough School Committee for a joint special open meeting with the Southborough School Committee today, the 29th of July 2020. I also note that at the moment, all members are in attendance except Mrs. Gannett will be joining us shortly.
I'll call to order the Southborough School Committee meeting Wednesday, July 29th, 2020. Time is about 6:04. It's a joint meeting with Northborough, a special open meeting, and I know that all members are present.
Mr. Bartno, correction if I may, Kelly Gannett is in the waiting room or in the attendee list at the moment. We'll just wait a sec to get her in. Thank you. Mrs. Gannett, can you hear us? Okay, well, she has joined. So, moving right along, I will read this on behalf of both committees. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Northborough and Southborough School Committees will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the district website at the URL listed on the agenda. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting, listen to or watch the meeting, may also do so in the following manner. NCAT Educational Channel, Verizon Channel 29, Charter Channel 194, or SAM Government Channel, Verizon Channel 37, Charter Channel 192. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the district website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. All right. Northborough colleagues, I recommend that we enter into executive session for the reason listed on the agenda and on the screen, so we'll entertain a motion to do so.
Mr. Chair, I move to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee.
Second for Northborough.
Excellent. So we have a motion from Mrs. Bailey Jones and a second from Mrs. Frank to enter into executive session.
This is Katura Martin. I will make the same motion for Southborough.
I'll second it.
So moved by Katura and seconded by Jessica.
Excellent.
And we would need a roll call, I believe.
Yes. We have a motion and a second on this action. Do I hear any discussion on this matter?
Question, Keith, am I supposed to be, am I the secretary? Am I supposed to be taking Minnesota's?
Once we enter executive session, that would be excellent.
Perfect.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none for the Northborough School Committee. This will be a roll call vote. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Gannett?
Yes.
Mrs. Tagliafari?
Yes.
And myself, Keith LaBelle, yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Are there, are there any questions about this motion from Southborough?
None.
Okay, so let's take a roll call vote. Jessica Devine?
Yes.
Katura Martin?
Yes.
Molly Amali?
Yes.
Jennifer Primack?
Yes.
And myself, Roger Challen votes yes.
Okay, both motions pass unanimously, so we'll be entering executive session. For those who are attendees, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bartno, we're expecting around 60 minutes max approximately. Okay, so we will be back.
Greg, I just announced that it would be five minutes, but it was a little less than that, so you beat me to it.
Mary Ellen is having trouble getting back in.
She's using the same Webinar link.
I think so. I told her to try restarting her browser. I'll be right back.
Northborough is in full attendance. Southborough complete?
I think Southborough is in full attendance, correct.
All right, and we'll have Mary Ellen join when, when she's able.
Okay, let's see here. That brings us to item number three, which is reopening plans. And with that, this is basically an informational briefing and question and answer session at the moment, so we don't require a motion from the committees at this time. And I'll hand it over to Mr. Bartno to kick us off with some, with the intro to the reopening plans and to help us work through some of the details of the current draft.
Sure. So first of all, thank you for this opportunity to share the reopening plans with the school committees as well as the communities. The first thing I want to share is that this has been extremely tremendous amount of work. This has been our main focus at the central office and at the building level, making sure that we have reopening plans that are thoughtful, thorough, and actually have the students' best interest in mind and maintain safety. So as part of the process, we had a lot of different stakeholders included, from the central office leadership team to building principals to directors. We also had a reopening advisory panel made up of educators across our 10 schools. We also are very fortunate to have health and safety experts. So Mary Ellen Duggan, our health and wellness coordinator, has been outstanding through this process. We've also had, very fortunate to have Dr. Medina, who is our district physician and a pediatrician, counsel us, as well as Dr. Serenella, who is an epidemiologist and a parent in Southborough. Amy Costigan, so we've had, we've been very fortunate. We've also had an air quality engineer, Mr. Viswanathan, who has been very helpful and donated his time and is a Northborough parent. Think about reopening and what it will take. We've also had school-based planning teams. So each of our elementary and middle schools have had school-based planning teams. We've been working very closely with the Northborough Teachers Association and Southborough Teachers Association, and then obviously, school committees and families, you know, families. We've issued a number of surveys and had tremendous results in terms of response rate, which has been very helpful in terms of thinking about a direction to move in. So this evening really is about sharing with you the draft district reopening plan. And I just wanted to emphasize that district planning for reopening really began in June as the 2019, 2020 school year concluded. We've been working hand in hand with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, who has been providing guidelines and guidance. The initial guidelines and guidance were released on July 15th and really developed a two-step process for all public school districts to follow. But prior to that, again, we were, we were doing our assessments and inventories. We were thinking about reopening and really trying to articulate our plans. And the second, the next, the two dates really that are key are by July 31st, which is Friday, district must complete and submit a preliminary reopening plan to DESI. Again, that's preliminary. And then by August 10th, the district must finalize a comprehensive plan document, and again, submit those to DESI and release them publicly to their, their communities. So our goal really this evening is to share the draft plan with the committees and the communities and begin that, that process of getting public comment and feedback and input. So just, I think this slide is important just to give you a sense of what some of the release guidance documents and when they've been released. So obviously, the first released document was at June, June 25th, Initial Fall School Reopening Guidance. And as you can see, this past Friday, we had Fall Remote Learning Guidance, Guidance for Courses With Additional Safety Requirements. We had Fall Reopening Transportation Guidance. So much of the guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has just been released. Again, we had moved ahead without the guidance, but now we took a lot of time to say, okay, what are, what are DESI's guidelines? And have we met those guidelines or exceeded those? So it's been an evolving, evolving landscape. It's been dynamic and there's been new information almost on a daily, if not weekly basis. So again, just highlight the COVID-19 pandemic. It's rapidly evolving situation at both the local and national level. And our approach really to, to planning was really thinking about different reopening models that are flexible and adaptable and being able to move to a different model depending on what the health metrics were, were indicating. Again, the district, we consult a range of resources to monitor the health metrics, you know, locally and beyond Massachusetts. And again, the district is also monitoring the community context of COVID-19, working with the Boards of Health in Northborough and Southborough around, you know, what are the patterns and trends we're seeing in terms of cases in Northborough and Southborough. So I'll turn it over to Stephanie to, to give you a big picture model of our reopening strategy and process.
Sure. And so we thought it would help to just maybe see a graphic of some of the different layers and threads of what we have been working on and the interactions. So at the top, you can see, as Greg has already talked about, that we had the DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Guidance, along with our own local experts, experts in the medical and air quality area. And we were going back and forth with them as, with both of those entities, as we wrote the draft of the district reopening plans. And at the same time, there's been many balls in the air at the same time, at the same time that we are working at a district level on the reopening plans, our school-based teams led by the school leaders were bringing teams together at the school level to make even more specific plans at each school. So at both the district level and at the school level, we've been working on everything that you'll hear about tonight, ranging from health and safety to operations and transportation, and then to the learning models. So as you can see below the school-based plans, there are four, it's often talked about by DESI as three models, but we actually have come to talk about four models because they really are four distinct possibilities. The, the in-person model, the hybrid model, the full remote model, and a standalone remote model. And we're going to talk through all four of those tonight. And the arrows at the bottom really represent a few of the many threads. These are three of the major threads that we are planning for and considering across all four models. So the first one is in terms of our service delivery models and student support systems. Regardless of what model we're in, how are we providing services and supports for, for the students in our system? So that is something that we're working on across. The second arrow down, it says occasional remote students and staff. And that's referring to the idea that we expect, given the nature of this situation, that there will be students and staff that have to go remote, potentially because they have been quarantined or possibly if they're sick. So we need to be planning for how to respond to that. And then the last thread that we're, you know, carefully considering that cuts across all four models, or, or one of the last, there are many threads, but one of the major threads is professional development and thinking about the learning and development that needs to happen related to technology, to curriculum, to pedagogy, related to anti-racism, social emotional learning, and collaborative planning. And just to be really clear, when we're thinking about the learning, it is obviously for our educators, but we are also thinking about what is the learning that we need to provide for families and for students in all of these different areas to engage in school in a different way.
So in terms of the planning, we've set seven guiding principles in terms of thinking about reopening.
Greg, can I interrupt for one second? Does this need to be recorded, was asked? Or not?
It is being filmed, but we can.
Okay, the question was asked, sorry.
Yeah. And it is, it is being recorded. Hang on, let me just confirm.
I asked Keith because I was like, am I supposed to be taking notes again?
And just, just an, and an update that Mary Ellen is still trying to get in. She's restarting her computer and still working.
So again, oops. So the district was use seven guiding principles in terms of thinking about reopening with the first principle, the most important, and that is really, was really to prioritize the physical, social, and emotional wellbeing of students, families, faculty, and staff. Not that the other six weren't important, but again, we thought safe staff, students' safety was very important. The other guiding principles, the second one was fostering, engaging learning opportunities for all students, that it was essential regardless of in-person, hybrid, or a remote model, that students were engaged in learning and found joy in learning. As Stephanie talked about, really thinking about how do we address the needs of students who are English learners and students with disabilities, and also other students who might not be succeeding in a particular remote environment, for example. Providing additional support to our most vulnerable student populations, for example, our homeless, provide for adaptability and coherence, and how we deliver instruction to respond to the changing health metrics. So whenever our guiding principles was to make sure that the, the models that we developed, we could move in and out of models seamlessly without recreating schedules, reshifting students, and changing routines. So we tried to have coherence across the three models. Address the professional learning of our faculty and staff, again, making sure that they had the knowledge and skills and tools to be able to work in whether it's a hybrid, 100% in-person, or a remote model. And then lastly, making sure that we're attending to the experiences and needs of all stakeholders by providing for opportunities for feedback and reflection, and getting a community input, getting family input, and making sure that we're addressing needs of families and making sure that students' needs are being met in terms of learning. So at this point, we were going to have Mary Ellen talk about health, health, safety, and wellbeing in terms of the reopening plans. I will, I will be Mary Ellen Duggan and review the section, the section of the plan. And I'll ask Keith and Stephanie to add anything that I, that I missed, and hopefully Mary Ellen can, can join us. So first of all, we, we, we've put together a district reopening plan that has pretty detailed plans in terms of the district reopening. And as Stephanie mentioned, this district reopening plan is being used by schools to create school reopening plans after those nuances. So when we look at the health and safety and wellbeing, obviously that's a priority in terms of the health and safety, as I mentioned, the guiding principle of priority. You know, all of the district guidelines and protocols around health and safety were put forth from, you know, the CDC, the Mass Department of Public Health, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And we really tried to follow those, those guidelines, as well as consult our district physician, Dr. Medina, when thinking about protocols and procedures.
Greg, would you be able to zoom in on the document a little more so people can see it a little better?
Yep.
Thank you.
So the first, the first important safety precaution is obviously face masks and face coverings, and really thinking about following district guidelines around masks. You know, all students pre-K through 12 will be required to wear a mask in a face covering that covers their nose and mouth. Obviously, there will be exceptions to mask and face covering requirements for those whom it's not possible due to whether it's metal condition, a disability impact, or other safety factors. In the Department of Elementary and Secondary Guidelines, K through grades K through one, pre-K through one masks were recommended, but as a district, working with our district physicians, we've taken a stance of all pre-K, all pre-K through 12 students will wear a mask unless otherwise not able to.
I'm here, Greg.
All right, Mary Ellen. I did masks and face coverings, so.
Okay. All right. So sorry about that. I don't know what my technical difficulty is. I had to go log in manually. So, um, did you cover all the masks?
No, we haven't, mask breaks.
Okay, so everybody will be wearing a mask. We will be providing masks for all staff. They'll be wearing surgical masks, students. We will be sending out more information about guidelines about what students will need when they come back to school, too. At least two masks a day. They should be labeled. There will be extra masks, different sizes for the students at school for those who forget them, or theirs get dirty, or whatever might happen. Parents will have some responsibility about washing their masks every day. And masks or face coverings need to be worn by everybody that rides the school bus for school transportation. So I'm sure Greg told you that the important parts about keeping ourselves safe no matter where we are are the face masks, the physical or social distancing, hand hygiene, and then screening is another part that's an important factor in this. So physical distancing, we is just keeping yourself greater than six feet away from someone because of close contact. By Department of Public Health standards, if somebody, if you're in, within six feet of another person for greater than 10 to 15 minutes are the guidelines we're using. So we are recommending six feet or greater between students and staff at all times. Desks and tables will be facing in all the same directions in the classroom, so there won't be any circle tables or small group activities at little tables. All, I'm sure Keith can go more into the detail about, we have, they, the learning spaces that we have, we've maximized the space there. So all non-essential things in the classrooms will be moved, non-essential furniture. When distancing is not possible or when students are unable due to, for whatever reason, unable to wear a mask, then additional PPE will be worn by the staff, and that will include masks and face shields, gowns if necessary, gloves if necessary. And our hallways and door entrances, they'll all be labeled about what's an entrance, what's an exit, one-way hallways where it's possible. If the hallways are wider, then there could be two directional traffic, but it will be marked and labeled just like when we're in the grocery store or other places, when we have the arrows on the floor or on the wall, where we can stand and which way we can walk. Screening will happen. It will not be done. We will not be taking temperatures every day. It will be the employee's responsibility to do a daily screening checklist, and it will be the family's responsibility to do a daily screening checklist that they will need to go through. And if they answer yes to questions, then they will need to contact the school nurse. So the daily checklists are similar for both, and they will go through a symptom screening checklist for all of the symptoms of COVID-19. And they will go through a close contact question. If you've been in close contact with someone, a positive case of COVID-19, or a travel question. If you've traveled outside the lower-risk states that are identified by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts within the past 14 days, that will be a question also. So if people answer yes to those questions, whether it's employees or students, they will have to follow different guidelines as to what to do. And we do have, will have those guidelines stipulated as to what needs to happen if you answer yes to those questions. There will be education about all of these issues. I don't know, do you want to look at the daily screening, Greg? Are you?
Sure, we can.
Oh, that's not the right one. We updated, sorry, we update daily, hourly. So. Oh, that's not the right one. So we updated, sorry, we update daily, hourly. So um, I, I will, it's in the appendix. When we get to that, we can click on what the daily checklist will do. So as you've heard numerous times, this is fluid. Everything that happens, it could change tomorrow. So this is as of today, all of these are as of today. So there will be education. We did have a question and answer forum for staff on Monday and Tuesday night where we had panel of experts to answer their questions. And we will continue to answer questions as they come in and we will have some webinars and other educational material for employees and for families before school resumes. So one of the things that it's going to, you know, everything about this is new for everything, everything that happens every day we run into something new and we're learning new things. But what we all need to remember is along, along with wearing our mask and social distancing and screening and washing our hands and having good hand hygiene, that when we're not feeling well, we just need to stay home, which is a whole new mindset for a lot of us. You know, like we'd push through if we weren't feeling 100%, but now when we're in the midst of a pandemic, a health pandemic, we need to be mindful. And if we're not feeling 100%, we just need to stay home and, and till we're feeling better. And that's an important thing to help prevent the spread of COVID-19 or any other illnesses for that matter.
Before you go, someone's asking if you could just zoom in a bit.
That's not me, so.
Oh.
I'm just doing the talking.
Mary Ellen does. Charge of. Mary Ellen, does that, how does that affect absentee policies? If people are going to be staying home more often?
So I think that our, at the absentee policies, we would, there would be some kind of waiver towards what our absentee policies are. When we are in a health pandemic, they will be different. So there'll still be requirements where you have to notify the school if your student's going to be absent. And the re, you know, there may be more questions. If you just call in your student, your child's sick, the nurse may call you back and ask you what are the symptoms because we need to do all of that tracing. If you could be symptomatic of coronavirus, we're going to recommend what needs to be done next. So.
Mary Ellen, Keith LaBelle here. I think when we did the handoff from Mr. Martino, we may have skipped a couple of the masks. And I know there's a lot of attendees curious about that. I, I know we didn't click through on the protocol documents, I believe.
Okay.
So if you could just circle that.
Updated one, so we'll see. So these are all draft guidelines or protocols. We keep scrolling. Right? So the guidelines, masks that are going to be, need to cover your nose and your mouth. They need to fit snugly to your face. They need to go, go underneath your chin or the, when you're wearing a face covering or a mask. I know there are all different kinds of face coverings that are worn, whether it's bandanas or the gaiters, but there are guidelines that we should be following for the safest thing. And those will be outlined in the handouts that go home and the, that go home. But it should be layered. It shouldn't be a single layer. It's what it is. So the masks need to be worn when riding the bus to or from school or for any kind of bus transportation that's provided, school bus transportation. They need to be worn at school. The face mask for the students will be provided by the family unless you're unable or like if they got dirty, like we said, or soiled at school or a mask broke, we will have extras at school. They should be labeled with the student's name or initials clearly labeled because you can imagine if you've ever seen a lost and found table at a school, there will be lots of lost and found masks and they won't be saved. They will just be discarded. So exceptions for a mask coverings, masks or face coverings will be evaluated on an individual basis. They should be washed daily at home. If it's soiled or wet, they will need to be removed. We will be going over all of this with the students, with the families, with the staff about how to remove your mask safely, how to put on your mask the right way, how your mask is going to be stored for mask breaks or for eating. And so for mask breaks, they will occur when students can be at least six feet apart and ideally outside or sitting at their desks with the windows open. So there's no ifs, that you have to be at least six feet apart when your mask is off. During mask breaks, if they're outside, there will be scheduled mask breaks for different classes so that the different cohorts or different classes aren't co-mingling or intermingling during the mask breaks. So there's different ways to take off your mask when you're outside and six feet apart and when you're inside and six feet apart. So when you're outside, you have to, when you're leaving or entering a building, you need to sanitize your hands. So when you leave the building to go outside, you would sanitize your hands. You would have your labeled bag or container to place your mask on, in. So you sanitize your hand, you take your mask off. Once you're outside, handling it the right way, you wouldn't, you don't touch the outside or the front of the mask because that's the part that's the dirtiest. So you want to use it by your ear lube, so the ties. You would fold it in half and place it in your bag. And there'll be spots for those bags to be while the class is outside. Those little details will need to be by school. Those will be determined about where the masks are stored when they're outside. They will be in the plastic bags or the containers. They won't be laying on top of each other. So they will be separated. And then when, before you put your, after you put your mask back on, you're going to sanitize your hands again. And if you were inside, say for lunch and you needed to remove your mask, you would be the six feet apart again. And your mask while you're eating could be laid on a napkin or a paper towel with the inside part facing up. It's the same way you sanitize your hands before you take it off, you sanitize your hands after you put it back on. So those are the mask things. Mask breaks. Well, I think that was really, that covered all of the mask protocols. And these are all draft guidelines and protocols. The ones for teachers do include items about the face shield. So when a face shield would be appropriate, we have, we are recommending that all staff members wear surgical masks just because we, after consulting with our medical experts that have volunteered their time for us, the transmission in hospitals when people are wearing medical surgical masks is negligible. So since we know that they are safer and we don't have any control over what kind of fabric masks that staff wear, and we know that the surgical mask will provide the safety that's needed, we will be providing masks for staff. We also have, we have a face shield for every staff member. So if students are unable to wear masks, and we have done this during our summer program, if students are unable to wear masks, the staff need to wear a face mask and a face shield. So if we think about how face masks work, the face masks protect you from me. So it protects you from anything. I, I won't be spreading anything to you. Where the face shield will protect me from you. So it's just another layer of protection if somebody can't wear a mask. The other time a face shield could be used would be if there's a lesson that needs to be done where the teacher's mouth needs to be visualized. And they are greater than six feet apart in the front of the classroom, they can remove their mask, keep a face shield on, do the lesson. And when the lesson is done, they can replace their mask and remove their face shield if they don't need it for other reasons. So there are different protocols for, that's why there's different guidelines for students and employees. And then.
So LaBelle, does that cover the, the mask question?
Mary Ellen, there is a question about students with hearing loss. Can you talk a little bit about the clear face masks?
Sure. So we, for, we had some from a group called So We Care. They have donated to us 25 masks, fabric masks that have the clear face sheet, face part right around the mouth. And people for the summer program are using those. And just some, whoever asks for them can have them. But we also have ordered, I'm not sure if anybody have, I have seen the total clear masks that have like foam around your nose and foam under your chin. We did order some of those to see how they are from what I've heard from people who have tried them. They are very almost feel claustrophobic for lack of a better term, but it's not very comfortable to wear and they fog up easily. So we are going to work on that for, you know, people who might do work with ELL students or are hearing impaired or are speech and language pathologists. So we're trying to find the best solution for that right now. Does that answer all the mask questions that?
Well, thank you, Mary Ellen. I think as a group, we could probably decide how we're going to proceed through each of these sections because my suspicion is that school committee members have some questions. And we're also, of course, getting some of the attendees with putting in some questions in the chat, some of which are on the topic we're on or might be on other topics. We of course have an opportunity later for audience sharing as well. So I think I would like to just pause for a moment and find out from Mr. Martino and Mr. Challen, see if we can quickly decide how we want to proceed through these topics. I think that would be appropriate. I think you're, you're muted, Mr. Martino.
Through, through the chair would be my recommendation that we go through each of the sections. We do have, we did receive all the questions that were submitted in advance. And we did meet as a district leadership team to try to make sure that as we cover topics, we answered all the questions that were submitted. So that would be my recommendation, just in terms of, there's a lot of content to review this evening and I want to make sure we review the content and answer the questions at the same time.
So hold the questions. A lot of them will be answered and then we'll kind of see where we land as we move through the process.
That'd be my recommendation.
Roger, do you have any?
I would concur with that recommendation.
Okay. Um, at what point do you, do you know, Mr. Martino, that this will be made available? I know there's some drafts, some things are more solidified than others and it's very much a work in progress, but I think that might help the attendees as well to know when they might get a chance to review.
So our intention is to communicate this, this draft plan this Friday in a one call to all families. And it's the very last slide of this presentation. There'll also be some community forums so that as, as families get a chance to really read the guide closely, they also can follow up with questions during a community forum, which we're scheduling for next week. And dates will follow on Friday.
Through the chair.
Please.
Um, Mr. Martino, the, you know how there's like Q and A at the bottom of the chat feature here, like on the thing?
Yep.
Are those questions, have those questions been through your thing too? Are these like repeats or are these additional ones? Is that what we're?
So the, so through the chair, that there are many questions submitted and, you know, Roger and Keith went through the questions and tried to look for duplicates. I do not see any questions in the Q and A that we have not received through the email. So, but we will be watching to see if there is any question that has not been asked yet through the the questions that were submitted.
Okay. So to recap, we're going to proceed and we have a lot of information and we, there is a lot of overlap on questions submitted prior that will be covered moving forward. And so what we'll do is we'll also share the information later this week and then there'll be the public community forums or public hearings column, what you will. So I guess what we're asking with the attendees at this point is feel free to keep the questions coming because I'm definitely taking note and I know others are as well. And what, what we're going to try and do is hopefully touch on most of those things. And certainly there'll be points of follow-up as well. Once you review the information we're providing as it gets released and we go through next week.
And through the chair, just one last comment. If attendees could ask their questions to the Q and A app instead of the chat, that would be helpful.
What about school committee members as well? Then just one more point of clarification. Should we also hold our questions?
I think I would, I would, I think holding the questions maybe until we get through a section. And then if there are any more additional questions around that section, school committee members can ask once the section's completed. Again, that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I think everybody take notes because I think it depends how if you've drilled down on all the, sometimes there's two URLs as you drill through these sections and, and so there's quite a bit of information. So I think what I'd like to do is assure everybody that all your questions are going to be answered through, whether it's today or on Friday and moving through next week as we move through the process. So I, I do concur that if we can wait till the end of a section, if there's something that's burning that hasn't been covered, I think we can give a brief opportunity to panelists to ask. Is that okay with you, Roger?
Yeah, I think that's a, if, if we try to do it some other way, I think it'll be very inefficient. So I think that's the most efficient way to move through this.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So we did physical distancing or social distancing. Does anybody, were there any questions about that before I move on to the next section?
I have one, Mary Ellen, if I might, and this is also an attendee, so that's great. The supply chain at the moment regarding surgical masks, I have two parts. Are they pediatric masks? I don't know if those exist actually for the little ones. For this, the disposables that we're going to keep on hand and the supply chain in general as far as costs and availability.
So we do have both pediatric masks, which are really small. They will fit our smallest students. And we do have donated fabric masks, child-sized fabric masks that come in various sizes. And we do have surgical masks. We have, we already have some and we have some that are arriving. Like we have over 10,000 masks right now. And then we have ordered an additional to that, additional tens of thousands of masks to have. So the supply chain, it was very limited and then it has opened up recently. So the, the supplies have definitely opened up recently. And we have a, Massachusetts has the bid list where they are working with certain companies, I guess, for lack of a better term, or certain providers of PPE.
Mary Ellen, do you want me to jump in?
Sure.
So Dessie and OSD actually worked together to create a statewide purchasing list for schools. The list is updated, I would say, on a weekly basis from a variety of different firms in terms of like the supply chain and what's available. It ranges from the face mask to hand sanitizer to gloves and gowns. So it's been actually, I have to say, like the best thing because you know that what they have on hand and you are able to order it. And we actually saw it come in within a matter of days. And they put this out to bid to these vendors. And the vendors had to promise that they would be able to supply the materials that they had bid on. So it's been great. And like Mary Ellen said, just the other day, we ordered another 13,000 adult side masks, masks, excuse me. So we should be, you know, in the mass department, I'll set for right now until we need to place another order.
Keith, I have a question on the PPE.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. I know in the early stages when we were talking about the PEE, it was, I think it stated once that it was required or suggested that we have a two-month supply on hand as a stockpile. Is that, has that changed? And if it hasn't, how are we, how, how are we into that two-month stockpile that's still in place?
So they actually, it was recommended by the Department of Education to have a twelve-week supply of PPE for the beginning of the year and we have met all of those recommendations that they had for us.
Okay, thank you.
Screening, we went through this already with the screening checklist. So there will be, the screening is one of those important parts about all of this. The contact tracing, I'm sure will come up about that. We work closely with the Department of Public Health. If someone does test positive for I'm not sure what that, sorry. If someone does test positive for COVID-19, we would work with the public health nurses in each town to do contact tracing with them and follow up. So whoever was a close contact, which again is within that six feet or greater than ten to fifteen minutes, would be considered a close contact and that goes for forty-eight hours from the time the person became symptomatic. So I think screening is, we will follow the guidelines that are put forth from the Commonwealth for the screening.
Is this the time to ask a question about that or are we waiting till we get?
I think you can ask a question about each section, I think, screening, sure.
Okay, so I, so I'm wondering what what are the current guidelines for somebody who's been exposed and also is a close contact that, that within six feet for ten or fifteen minutes? Is that masked or unmasked? So if you're, so that's, it's a two-part question.
Okay, so I'll answer the second part. That's the easiest. It's masked or unmasked. You're a close contact. If you're within six feet for greater than ten to fifteen minutes, you are a close contact whether you have a mask on or not.
Okay.
That's by Department of Public Health guidelines that we're following there. And the other part of your question, sorry, Katara.
No, that's okay. What are the current guidelines for? It says that students and employees would not be able to return to school. So what, how long is that currently? Is that a 18-day course?
Great, can we, can we go to the appendix? And it might be easier to oh, there we go. Keep going. Yep, yep, yep. Okay, so the one that says for students, the symptomatic or close contact students. Right there, yes. And you'll probably need to so the daily screening, this is the one that you can click on and you can see what your daily screening will be. If you can for the daily screening. So prior to sending your child to school each day, we're asking that you complete this following checklist. And you would go through the symptoms. Does your child have any symptoms of COVID-19 that are symptomatic of COVID-19? So that would be temperature greater than hundred point four degrees Fahrenheit, a new onset of a cough or shortness of breath that's not associated with a chronic illness that's already been diagnosed. Sore throat, headache with other symptoms, fatigue with other symptoms, body or muscle aches, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, congestion or runny nose with other symptoms, or a new onset of loss of taste or smell. So that you would go through that, those symptoms. The next question would be about a close contact. Has a household member or a close contact of yours do they have been diagnosed with COVID-19 in the past fourteen days? So a quarantine, if you are a close contact of some, a positive case of COVID-19, you need to quarantine for fourteen days. And you can't test out of quarantine. Even if you went and had a negative test, you would still quarantine for the fourteen days. If you went and had a positive test, it's ten days.
Mary Ellen, just to follow up on this close contact. So I understand that if you're within six feet of someone for greater than ten, fifteen minutes, whether or not you have a mask or not, it really doesn't make any difference. However, if you were within six feet of someone and that someone had a mask on the entire time, that was the only time you were in contact with them. Does that change the dynamic at all?
If it was greater than ten to fifteen minutes, no.
Okay, so it makes no difference who has a mask on. You could both have masks on for ten or fifteen minutes and it's, okay, thank you.
So that's why the social distancing or physical distancing is a really important part of mitigating this virus.
Through the chair.
Yes, please.
For this checklist, is this going to be something that's going to be like an online thing that parents have to do daily? Is this just an honor system? Like how is this going to be evaluated and ensured that families are doing this?
This is going to be the honor system.
Mary Ellen, would you like me to go back to the document?
Sure. And then the third part is the travel outside of the lower-risk states. But you know, August first, our travel order in Massachusetts is starting and the lower-risk states will be listed and that will be an updated list that we'll go through. So you can go back to the other documents of this. So this is, oh, this one. So if you answered yes to any of the symptom questions, the parent would, you would not send your child to school. That's what the checklist says. So it would be like your checklist, you'd keep it on your refrigerator, on your door or in your child's agenda. However, it's going to help you to remind you to do it. Maybe we'll have magnets or something, whatever our public awareness campaign is going to be about this. But you would contact the school nurse and then who would recommend that you contact your healthcare provider for testing. So if you, so that is if you are symptomatic. So if your healthcare provider decides not to test you and says, oh, you have a fever because you have an ear infection or you had a sore throat because it's strep throat, you have strep throat, it's positive. And they do not think that it is COVID-19. There is a letter that will, the healthcare providers, we have, Dr. Medina and I are planning to meet with local healthcare providers to tell them what our new guidelines are going to be so that everybody is on the same page so they know what the schools will need for return to school. So so if you're not tested and there's an alternative diagnosis for your symptoms, your healthcare provider could send in a note stating that and you could return to school via our regular guidelines, which are twenty-four hours fever-free without fever-reducing medicine. All of those guidelines that we have, the standing guidelines that we have and an improvement of symptoms. So if you did get tested, we would await your test results. If you're not tested and your physician does not have an alternative diagnosis to give to us and they chose not to test you, you would return to school ten days. It would be the same as if you tested positive, ten days after the onset of your symptoms. And if you're fever-free for twenty-four hours without medicine and if your symptoms have improved. So these are all guidelines about the fever-free and the ten days are Department of Public Health guidelines that we are following. If you tested can you slide over to the side there, Greg, because I'm not sure if it's, no, to the left? So if you're tested and you test negative, then there's, you would return to school when you're symptomatic, the same things, twenty-four hours fever-free, your symptoms have improved. If you're tested and you tested positive, you would isolate at home for the ten days from the day the test was taken. If you were, say you were a close contact and you, they recommended you get tested because you're a close contact. You didn't have any symptoms when you got tested and then you became symptomatic. Your quarantine, your isolation would start, day one would be the day your symptoms started. So that, that's if you were asymptomatic and got tested and then you became symptomatic. Your quarantine isolation starts the day your symptoms start. So if you're a close contact, this is the second part of that. If you answered yes to that question, you need to quarantine for fourteen days from the last day of contact with a COVID-positive individual. So we would recommend that you contact your healthcare provider and around day four or five, they do a test or symptoms begin before that, then a test be done then. So the reason for that is because that day four or five, what they're realizing is when people are exposed, that's about when the positivity rate starts to increase. And it's about sixty-seven percent around day five. Then it increases to an eighty percent positivity as you get higher up in your numbers like day eight or nine. So you would be returned to school when quarantine was done. If you travel outside of Massachusetts to whatever, to any outside of the lower-risk state. So if you's traveled anywhere right now outside of New England, New York or New Jersey, you need to quarantine for fourteen days upon your arrival back to Massachusetts.
I have a question. Can you clarify in all of the statements where it says days, does that mean school days or calendar days?
Calendar days.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we will be working closely with the Board of Health if people do test positive and to do contact tracing for close contacts if there is a positive case. Hand hygiene. Okay, so this is one of those really important things about protecting ourselves and protecting others from getting sick, any kind of illness really. So there'll be a lot of cleaning and sanitizing hands. And that will be hand washing with soap and water properly is the number one way to keep ourselves healthy. It has always been the number one way, not just since COVID-19 happened, but it has always been the number one way to keep yourselves healthy. So proper hand washing is key to keeping ourselves healthy during all of this. So when hand washing is not available, hand sanitizing is the next best thing. So both hand washing and hand sanitizing need to rub and scrub for twenty seconds each of them. So we will be doing a lot of education about proper hand washing and proper use of hand sanitizer. Hand sanitizer, you need to rub it all over your hands for about twenty seconds. So about the same amount of time that you do when you wash your hands. And it should air, it should air-dry, not be wiped off on anything. So there's a lot of times when you should be hand sanitizing. It will be the difference between before and now will be hand washing or sanitizing will happen coming into school, into the, in and out of school, in and out of classrooms. So it will be happening a lot more frequently.
Mary Ellen, a question?
Yes.
This is more about procurement of hand sanitizer. Is that an issue at this time?
That is not an issue at this time. I defer to Keith and Becky. They have been the ordering and procuring PPE. I just kind of tell them what I need and magically make it appear.
Hand sanitizer is another one of the items that's on the statewide contract list. So we have been able to find it in varying sizes. We've ordered gallon jugs and we've also ordered smaller containers for the classrooms. And we've also been able to obtain a few wall mount units for some of our classrooms as well with the refills. So we, you know, the, like I said, that statewide contract has been immensely helpful in terms of tracking down the items that we need.
The two other things related to hand sanitizer is we are reviewing the FDA list for those items that are not, not allowed through manufacturing and methanol that was in some of the items that were coming over. We've secured that to ensure they're not on that list. We're also working with our local, North Borough and South Borough FD to make sure we're storing it properly because it is an alcohol-based product. We are making sure that we are following all the fire safety standards related to sanitizer storage.
Yeah, and Lauren, that the statewide list is also monitoring the FDA compliance as well. They've put out the alert and so they're making sure that companies are aware of those items that they're not able to, well, they shouldn't be because they've been recalled. But they're, they're checking the list to make sure that FDA has not recalled the items that are being offered.
Thank you. And I know traditionally, a lot of times families will bring in hand sanitizer at the beginning of the year. Is that something that if possible, if there is enough for families to purchase in grocery stores, would that be something that would be in place as well?
That is something that I think each school is going to, going to take on. I think probably for the older, older grades, it's going to be something that's a little more easier regulated. I think we do have enough in school to, to cover ourselves, but I think that's going to be part of an ongoing conversation as we get into this and the ever-changing nature of it. I do know, Dr. Medina, can you clarify the statement that, of Dr. Medina has allowed this as our district physician? Mary Ellen, can you clarify that?
So just to clarify what keeps speaking about, so Lauren, was that you that asked that question?
Yes.
So as long as it is FDA-approved, as has happened in the past, people have donated to the classroom. So the schools will be, will, will be monitoring that. So if you'd like to donate something to the school, I would check with your individual schools that your children attend. As far as hand sanitizer is classified by the Department of Public Health as a over-the-counter medication. So we have a standing order for that now that it can be used under adult supervision only. So that is what Keith was referring to as the older students do it. So it should be used under adult supervision at all times.
Thank you.
And then, nice question, please?
Sure.
For the hand, what's going to be the procedure for entering schools? Are we going to have like new hand washing stations in strategic areas? Or are we going to ask kids to go to the restroom to wash their hands? Are we going to say hand sanitizer is good enough? What's going to be the procedure with that?
So hand sanitizer in and out of the building. We have wall units at the entrance of each school. So the student groups, this is another way of promoting the social distancing is that they will be kept within the same group or the same cohort throughout the day as much as is feasible for the level, the academic level that they are at or the grade level they're at. So that was then our PPE that we already have ordered and received most of it already. We have nitro and vinyl gloves, non-latex gloves. We have N95 masks for the school nurses or healthcare providers. We have surgical masks, both in fabric masks, adult and child size, for the fabric, child size for the fabric masks as well as the disposable masks for child and adult. We have face shields for every employee. We have goggles for the healthcare providers. We have placed plexiglass barriers where they have been needed for that extra protection that might be needed in the main offices. And Keith has been in charge of that also. We are lab coats for the nursing staff and for other staff that might need it, that might have closer contact with students. We have disposable gowns for people that might need them for toileting or any students, if there are any students that they might need them for. We have pulse oximeters to check people's oxygen level in the health offices. We have gotten the forehead thermometers for each school. We have hand sanitizer dispensers on all units and refills and sanitizing wipes. Keith can get into the electrostatic sprayers. That has to do with the disinfecting and cleaning and the cleaning supplies. School attendance, that anybody, student or employee exhibiting any COVID-19 symptoms must stay home and contact through, by that checklist who they need to contact, the school nurse. The school nurse, and if it's an employee, they will need to contact the school nurse plus human resources so we can advise them as to what to do. This kind of goes back to what we would do. We talked about that in the guidance already. What would happen when you called the nurse, they would advise you as to what needs to happen in order for your child to be able to come to school, what criteria need to be met, who would be notified, and what needs to be done. We are recommending, we will have, they're calling it a medical waiting room or also known as an isolation room. And these rooms have been determined and our air quality engineer has vetted them all to make sure that they meet certain criteria, the health offices in this isolation room or medical waiting room. So what it would be is if someone, like I said, all procedures are gonna be new for everybody in every school, but coming to the health office will be one of those things, visiting the nurse, that's gonna change for everybody. And it will require a call to the nurse or a scheduled kind of appointment if students have scheduled procedures or medications, which it already happens for those things. But if someone is ill or injured, it will require a call first so that we'll know where we need to triage them either to the health office, which will be kept as a clean space where illness, people with illnesses will not be assessed there or wait there or the isolation room or medical waiting room where illnesses would go to. So we have those isolation rooms has already been determined and evaluated by our air quality engineer. So they have everything that we need in them. We're recommending in the past, when we, you filled out your forms and you put emergency contacts in, that all parents have at least three to four emergency contacts. And these emergency contacts need to be someone other than the parent. It can't be the same numbers listed. That happens a lot of times that people put their own numbers as the emergency contact, but it needs to be someone who would be available if you were not to pick up your child within 30 minutes if they needed to go home. So that's one of the guidelines that we are going to try to abide by. And the areas that are used by sick people or people who are exhibiting signs of COVID-19 or any symptoms will all be cleaned and disinfected with the custodial staff. They all have their guidelines that they need to follow in order to clean and disinfect an area. We will work in close contact with our Board of Health, Public Health, their agents and their nurses. And if we do, we will follow all kinds of confidentiality, confidentiality guidelines that we need to follow as healthcare providers. We are not at this time going to be allowing visitors into the school building. If it is a contracted service that needs to come in, like an electrician, or yesterday we had all of our AEDs inspected. They need to go through the checklist. Like I sent the person, the person who was coming, I sent them our checklist. We went through it verbally. He answered though to all the questions. We maintained our physical distance the whole time as we went to each building. So they need to, if people do come into the building, they do need to follow our criteria checklist, even if their employer has their own checklist. They need to follow the one of the district. So if each school will set up their things, like if your child forgot their lunch or left their homework at home, all of those things, those ways that they'll be dropped off will be determined by school, but we will be limiting, severely limiting the number of people who come in and out of the school building. Even the mail carriers will be dropping things outside. So it will be, as I said, everything's gonna be new with all kinds of new guidelines and procedures once school starts. I think that's it for me for now unless anybody has any questions that I didn't talk about.
So thank you, Mary Ellen. So the next section of the district reopening plan is learning and teaching models for reopening. And I am going to turn it over for Stephanie to speak about the specifics.
Thank you, Greg. So what you see in front of you is the table of contents for this section of the guide. And I'm gonna take us through talking about these different topics to give you a better understanding of the models for learning and teaching. And not only where we are now in our thinking, but I know there is a desire to understand in some cases how we have arrived here because the thinking has evolved over time. So I'm gonna try to address both. So I'm gonna start with the first one about transitioning back to school. And I just want to make the point that it has been an ongoing conversation and sort of a drumbeat that people keep coming back to, which is that we always start school by setting routines and making connections and building community. And that that is gonna be more important than ever this fall. So regardless of what model we are in, there is a strong commitment throughout the district that time needs to be devoted, as it always is, and in enhanced ways to making connections, building community, building routines, and all of those different ways that we bring the community together and, and build the foundation upon which all of the learning can happen. So that's an overarching kind of commitment. So Greg, we can go ahead to the next slide. And I'm gonna first just give you a quick overview of the four models that we're talking about, and then we'll go into much greater depth on each one. So the first model is the in-person learning, which is, you know, we were asked by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, every school in the Commonwealth, every system in the Commonwealth was asked to develop models for each of these categories. So in-person learning is, is 100% of the students coming back to school with appropriate modifications for health and safety. There is a version of in-person learning that is back to, you know, without health and safety modifications, but that is, you know, if there were a vaccine and/or treatments. So we're not even talking about that. This is with health and safety requirements that Mary Ellen just walked us through. Second model is a hybrid learning model, which involves a combination of in-person learning and remote learning. So having students spending some of their days learning remotely and some of their days in person. And this allows for a limited number of students to be in a classroom and in a building at one time. In a hybrid learning model, there would be a limited number of students based on individual needs that might attend school more frequently than others, not necessarily every day, but more frequently than others. There might be some that attend every day and some that attend with greater frequency. The full remote learning model is, you know, if based on the health metrics or based on, you know, the situation, we are all in a remote, the students are all in a remote setting, then learning and teaching will be provided remotely. In a full remote learning model, to the extent possible, given the health metrics and safety, every effort will still be made to provide as much in-person instruction as possible for students who receive special education services and for students who have significant needs of other kinds. The fourth model is the standalone remote program. And this is recognizing that there will be some, some students who are unable to return to school in, in-person hybrid, in-person or hybrid. And so if they are saying from the get-go, whether it's due to an underlying health condition or other factors, that their student is going to be, they are opting for their student to be fully and remote from the start, then that is what we're calling the standalone remote option. And I'll talk more about that as we go ahead. So I'm gonna go through each of the four models and tell you, try to explain them in greater depth. One of the things that Greg already mentioned that I wanna just reiterate is that as we've been making, as we've been working through these models and coming to the current draft that we have, one of the things that we are committed to is the adaptability to move between the models. You know, we want it to be possible for us to pivot if we are in a hybrid mob, hybrid model and we need to go to remote, that we are up and running the next day and vice versa, so that there are no gaps. And so therefore, we want the schedules and the approach to work for smooth and effective transitions. So the 100% in-person model, the first thing we were asked to do by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, I, I think it was back in June, mid-June, was to conduct a feasibility study. And we went school by school. Keith worked very closely with every school leader and facilities staff and others from central office were involved and looking at the classrooms, looking at all the different spaces in the room. And we did determine that we could achieve three to six feet of distance. But if we had all students back, we could not meet our own standard that, that Mary Ellen already talked about, which was six feet of distance between students. We did continue on to also analyze, what does it mean for learning and teaching if we are back with all students, whether it's with less than six feet or whether we were started to try to use other spaces? And as I saw some of you acknowledging in the Q and A tonight, when, if you had the full complement of students in the building and they were seated in rows facing forward, doing all of the different protocols that Mary Ellen just walked us through, maintaining the distance, it would have a significant impact on learning and teaching and on the options for the educational experience and just the overall experience of students in schools. So for us, there is a really big difference between is it feasible to get the students into the building and is it the right thing to do for our students? So that, you know, is where we are with the in-person model that it is not, it does not meet our standard of six feet. We cannot meet that standard. There are issues around meeting the standards at lunchtime and at busing and all the different places, nor do we think that it provides a better opportunity in terms of the educational opportunity. Okay, so the hybrid learning model. So the hybrid learning model has evolved. And as you may recall, in June, we, so we've been working on many of these things simultaneously. And we put out a survey to families. And at that time, there were two models that we asked, and actually to educators as well. One was what we called a split week model, which was week, the one week, half of the students are in. We'll call them cohort A. The next week cohort B is in and the opposite cohort is in remote. And then we had an alternating day model, A, B, A, B, alternating, which I think we called a split week, or I forget what the names are. Anyway, what we found was that, well, there was, we were, it was very close, but there was greater, for both educators and for parents, there was slightly more support for the alternating days than there was for the split weeks. And the primary reason for that, on both the educator side and the family side, was greater continuity for students in terms of contact with teachers and with school. So not so much time going by in between the time that they were in school. However, a really strong theme in that data was also, people were worried about consistency of schedules and the impact on families if, of keeping track of when is my child supposed to be in school? When is my child remote? And they were concerned with that model. The first week you would be there Monday, Wednesday, Friday. The next week you would be there Tuesday, Thursday, and back to Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So there was, there was some concern about that. As we then moved to this model that you see in front of you, one of the advantages was greater consistency in terms of people's individual schedules. But what we discovered was a second advantage is that in this model, every week would start on Monday with the teacher working directly with their entire class. It would be remotely, but our educators felt really strongly, those who have been involved in these conversations, that there was a real advantage to being able to have a time during the week when cohorts A and B were together, even though it was remote. So if you are a student in cohort A, you, everybody's remote on Monday, then you might have, then you have a remote structured day. Then Wednesday is an in-person day at school. Thursday is a remote structured day at home. Friday is an in-person at school. Cohort B, we're all together on Monday, and then it's the opposite in terms of which days you're in school and which days you're home. So there's a lot to this. The Monday, when everyone is together, is a day where the teacher is interacting with the students throughout the day. So there might be, and it's gonna, if it's a middle school student, they are going through the schedule of their day, right? So they, each school will be figuring out exactly what that schedule is. But one of the things to realize about all of the models that is quite different than the spring is that this will be structured so that there is a school day that starts and ends. You know, at, like in a hybrid learning model, your school day starts and ends at the same time it would if you were in person, whether you are at home or whether you are at school. And in, in the spring, the middle school schedule was condensed in terms of the time that they were going through their classes. But that would not be true in this schedule. They would be at school for the whole day or they would be at home interacting with a structured schedule throughout the day. On Monday, that would be with their teacher, potentially on and off Zoom, potentially having some activities where they're then going to work on something or working in a small group on Zoom, and then maybe back to a bigger group, depending on the levels and depending on the classes. On the remote structured learning days, Greg's pointing to one of them, on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday or Friday, those days, one of the things that we are still doing is we, when we have a better sense of which students will be involved in which models and as we have a better understanding of our staffing capacity, we are looking at what educators might be available to interact with students who are in the remote setting. While if it's an elementary student, their home, their classroom teacher will be working with the in-person kids. But there might be other experiences that are happening. Regardless of those interactions, the day will be a structured day that is progressing their learning. So again, it will have, it will have a start and an end in terms of a school day. And we'll have, you know, a range of different types of activities that are moving students through their work. Another big difference from the spring is that the teacher on the previous day can be setting students up with the materials and all of the, all of the resources, but also with lessons that set them up for that remote learning. So I'm gonna make one more point about this and then I'll, or actually two more, and then I'll pause to see if there were questions. So the, the next point I wanted to make was about the in-person learning. In the in-person learning, we're talking now about much smaller groups of students in the classroom. And so now we have even less furniture in the In the classroom. And so now we have even less furniture in the classroom as compared to if it was a full in-person. We have the teachers having many more. Instructional possibilities in terms of what they can do with those students. And as you can imagine, what a teacher can accomplish with ten students. Or, you know, the numbers could vary depending on the classes, but it's about fifty percent of what would normally be their class. Is going to be very different than what they could accomplish with their full class. So we also believe that that in-person time, we often say that's, that's gold, like that's going to be. You know, a place where the teachers are able to do a lot of individualized work. Small groups with distance. And assessing, providing feedback and setting kids up for their ongoing learning. My last point is that as you can see across the bottom, and I mentioned earlier. There are a limited number of students who based on individual need will be attending school more frequently. And that will look different for different students, but it will allow students. To the best of our ability to receive supports and services in person. We're gonna try to maximize that and to support students who have more significant needs. To be successful in this model. I'm gonna pause and see if there's any questions because that's a lot so far.
So Stephanie, thank you for your presentation so far. I do have a question about remote learning. So whether it's remote learning in this hybrid model or full remote learning. I know that with our NSBorrow Connect two point O, there was a lot of feedback from families. Some saying that they were very overwhelmed with the amount of work and other families saying that their children weren't being challenged enough. So are those conversations taking place at the school or district level?
They are. And so, you know, we, as, as we all know, we had to. We're in sort of emergency mode, right? And so there was great variability. In terms of the different experiences that people had and there was clear feedback about that. And so a lot of what we're doing and continue to be doing is having conversations about. How do we? Provide the opportunity, provide the expectations on the student side and on the teacher, on the educator side. So that we have. Clarity and greater consistency. So there's one piece that I think is about accountability and expectations. And there are some factors that are really different going into the fall. That we didn't have in the spring and some of those are the expectation that we are meeting. The learning standards and the time expectations of a traditional school day. That we are assessing and grading students, that we are taking attendance. And I think this changes the accountability on, on all sides of the equation. The other pieces that we, if you remember back to that overarching graphic, one of the threads was about professional development. And there is an ongoing conversation about how do we provide. Although many teachers have sought their own opportunities to learn, both starting in the spring and throughout the summer. We also as a district are going to be through in August and then going into September. Providing the professional development to support teachers and having the tools, the technology. And the sort of pedagogy for remote learning, but we're also going to be providing the collaboration opportunities. We know from the spring that some of our greatest successes around learning and teaching. Teachers told us were where they work together as teams. And so we want to make sure that we are creating those opportunities for them to work together as teams. Which will also create greater consistency and higher quality.
Thank you, Stephanie. And I do have one question regarding hybrid models. So if our district chooses to go with a hybrid learning model. Is there a plan to decide who is in cohort A and who is in cohort B? And will families have a choice, say, based on parents' working schedules?
It's a great question and ongoing work. So our current. Approach to this that we are working on is we want to ensure that families. Members of the same family or the same household are on the same schedule, a K to pre-K to twelve. So across all ten schools. So our starting point is going, is that we are trying to do it by last name. As a sort of first take, but then we will be having to do some adjusting in order to balance out. Class sizes to make sure we can meet the health and safety requirements and various other sort of educational needs. But this is still a work in progress. Unfortunately, it is so incredibly complicated in terms of also then meeting. Student support services needs, all of the different layers. That we won't be able to sort of accommodate specific requests based on individual families' schedules. I don't know if Greg has anything else on that. No, okay.
Stephanie, I have a question on the remote learning. I know that there's a difference between the remote structured learning and the teacher facilitated remote learning. My first question on the remote structured learning, let's take cohort A. There are those, that cohort would have it on Tuesday and Thursday. During that time, will they have any interaction with the teacher at all via technology? Or are they on their own?
So that is one of the pieces that is still in progress and we are trying to figure out. We would like for them to have interaction with their teachers, but as you can imagine. If we take an elementary student or actually even a middle school student, if their math teacher. Is currently teaching the other half of the math class. It's, I think, an unreasonable expectation to expect that that teacher is also doing a good job. Of being a remote teacher. There has been talk of the role of streaming classrooms. And we are exploring the possibilities there of what that would look like and how that would work. And in particular, looking at that in terms of kids who might be quarantined. And what role that might play. But we, there are a lot of factors that we're still, you know, there are still unknowns to us. So we still don't know, there will be some students who opt into the standalone rem- remote. And there will be some staff who can only work remote. And we, without those numbers, we're still getting to that nitty gritty. Of what staff is available to provide that sort of interaction in between. So our first. Approach to it is that those days will be planned and structured. For independent work and now we're also then coming back at it to say. Are there educators who might be able to then interact with those students? But we have, we are still have a lot of information to gather to be able to answer that.
So I, if I may, I actually, oh, Joan, I'm sorry, do you have another question?
That's okay. Yeah, I have two more. I'll make it very quick. On Monday, when you look at the teacher facilitated remote learning. Let's take an example of, are you looking at a nine to three normal school day? And would the teacher be facilitating those, that education? Taking out for lunch and any breaks? Would the teacher be with the students in remote facilitated learning from nine to three?
So there has been a lot of talk among the planning teams about the idea that people feel. People don't feel comfortable with the idea that our kids are sitting in front of a computer. From eight thirty in the morning to two thirty in the afternoon or nine to three. And yet we are trying to find that balance of increasing the rigor. And really having a structured experience that feels like a school day, right? And that functions like a school day in terms of moving the learning. So one of the things we'll be working on as. This is to try to find a balance between being in front of the screen for some things. And away from the screen for other types of learning. And that will happen multiple ways. At the elementary level, the structure of the day may be set up. To have checkpoints and on and off the screen. Whereas at the middle school where you're moving from class to class, a teacher might start a class. Do a ten-minute mini lesson and then put kids to work on something. That, you know, is what they're gonna be working on and that they don't need to be back for twenty-five, thirty minutes. So there's a lot of different ways that can happen, but we wanna sort of fi- thread the needle. And find that balance between it feeling like a full school day, but not having kids glued to a screen from eight thirty to two thirty.
And my last question was, when you look at the two in-person learning days. The students in K to five, will they still be offered their specials such as art, music, phys ed?
Yes, so one of the expectations from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And something that we all believe in strongly is that we don't want to shave any parts, any sort of disciplines. Or parts of their education off. We are expected to and we are committed to teaching all of the different disciplines. So they will be receiving their specials, but as we work through this schedule. Determining which will be live and then which they will end up having as an elementary student, some of their specials live and some of them remote. And it might be synchronous, live, remote, or it might be. You know, an activity that they're completing, there, there could be a combination and those are some of the details that we're still. Ironing out, but there will likely be a combination.
Okay, thank you.
So, so I had a question and it's not specifically related to the hybrid model, although it's, it's slightly related. So the original survey that went out to families was sent quite a while ago. And I think in, in pandemic time, it's probably equivalent to about a year ago. So given that, you know, time has gone on, we have more information now about the potential models. I suspect that there will be more discussion about safety measures and the buildings and air. And I know we're getting to all of that, so people will have a much better idea of what to expect. Are we considering doing another survey to get people's current thinking about how many? Families are thinking fully remote, they prefer the standalone program versus going to, you know, sending their children in person?
Yeah, so we are. Working on drafting a survey to collect that data, Katara, because you are right. The last time we surveyed around these hybrid models was at the end of the school year. So there will be another survey to get a sense of the direction families are heading in. And we also ask families who are, who are going to opt in to that standalone remote. To let us know so that we can plan and we can start thinking about staffing and making sure that. They have a program that is rigorous and have North Coast, South Coast staff attending to it. So yes.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a question? Greg, before re-polling the families, has any consideration been given to? Really giving families a painted picture of what a day will look like for the kids? I think what families think is gonna happen versus reality could be very different and that may change a lot of families' answers. So I think kind of having a, this is really what school is going to look like in school. You know, whether different schools, different grade levels would be helpful and may. Make families make a better decision and not be flip-flopping their decision once they realize what it's really gonna look like.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's a great point and really trying to demonstrate and share with families. You know, what is the day in the life of a, of a first grader in a hybrid model? What is a day in the life of a teacher and really try to demonstrate that experience so families can make informed decisions? Because I think it is important to note that school is going to be very different from what it used to be. It's just, that's the reality we're in in terms of, of the pandemic. And, and those are the types of questions in the journey we've been on in terms of. You know, what would a hundred percent in-person learning look like with all these precautions and measures and limitations? Compared to a hybrid model compared to a remote. So that is some of the work that we are doing. And we'll communicate to, to families and Stephanie can speak to what that looks like.
Yeah, I was also, I was just thinking, there is a question that was asked in one of the chats or Q and A about. Whether we also considered having the remote, the full remote day on a Wednesday. Which I'm sure people have been hearing about some other towns doing and having it as a cleaning day. And that just in me, reminding me that I wanted to mention that one of the things we've been doing. If you remember, we talked about how we've been interacting with our medical expert advisors back and forth. And one of the things we've done is ask, one of the doctors has been able to. Get some of her colleagues to do some modeling of the different. Hybrid models we've been considering. So whether it was an AA versus an AB, then a remote day, AB. Or an all-A week versus an all-B week or Monday, all of these different dates. So we've asked, and ultimately between the split mo- the alternating day models. The, having the cleaning day in the middle did not change the risk factors. Because it really was not about cleaning. We have, and Keith will tell you about the capacity to do the deep cleaning every day. So the changes in risk really have to do with how many days were in school and in person. And so going from five days of every child being in school, five days. Down to every child being in school, fewer days reduces the risk. But changing which days are off, the medical team basically said that. It really becomes more of an educational decision and looking at what, you know, works for the educators.
No, and I'll just add too that we did map it out on our actual calendar. So, you know, looking at how, you know, this is a theoretical model that you're looking at right now, but how does it play out in terms of actual calendar days? You know, and there are a number of Monday holidays, for example, that, that would impact the overall all balance. Where Wednesday, typically have Wednesday holiday, so it's, it's a more consistent day. So we did do that analysis as well and looked at, okay, if it was Wednesday, what would the impact be in terms of time on learning in person compared to remote? And again, we've been on this journey, so it's, there's a lot of backwork that went into really thinking about this. But the other thing that I think is important to note is that whatever model we look at. Whatever this, you know, if it's a Monday or if we took Monday and had that teacher facilitated remote learning. On a Friday instead of a Monday, the schedule still works. There's flexibility in the schedule. So, and that's something we've been working very closely with our principals around. That, you know, it's, it's, we need that flexibility to be able to do some shifting. But this was the, the model that we landed on based on our analysis, calendaring. And conversations with teachers and principals and so forth.
Any other questions about the hybrid?
Yeah, I have some questions. So the remote structured learning, I'm just wondering. How this could look, you know, I could see this, that working okay for. Kids in middle school, but I'm thinking about kindergarters, first graders. You know, the youngest ones, kids who maybe have problems with attention span, you know. All sorts, you know, we have all sorts of learners. So I'm trying to figure out. How students will succeed in a remote structured learning scenario, especially, you know, or anybody, kids with challenges. Our younger students. You know, I, I know parents are concerned that they're gonna have to be their full-time educator on those days, helping them along. What are our thoughts on that?
So I'll save a few things and then there might be others on the team that want to jump in. You know, this is something we're actively working on that we worry about as well. I think many of us on the team are parents and I can speak for myself. That I was in the same position as many of the parents with, you know, working at the same time that my children of, my three children of different ages. Were, you know, trying to work their way through remote learning. So we are really working on that and there's a few ways that we're thinking about it. So we are really working on that, and there's a few ways that we're thinking about it, and there's a lot of work that we're still doing on it. And educators are involved in helping with this. One really big difference is that because these are alternating days, particularly for our youngest learners, we can send them home with many of the things they need to be able to do the activities that we might want them doing the next day, and we didn't have that opportunity in the same way in the spring. So that's one thing that we're thinking about, how, how that helps us. But we also can break up the day in different ways and structure the day in different ways. So someone brought up about specials earlier. You know, one possibility is that the specials are, are helping to break up the day. And that those might be a live experience during a remote structured learning day, whereas they might have had some, you know, activities that they brought home from the previous day, then they might be having a live experience with a specialist, and maybe going back to a more independent activity. The other thing is that we have a lot of tools that teachers have been building around the use of videos and being able to provide support to students asynchronously. And by working together in teams, we can take, we can share the work of building some of those things that a student might have. So they might watch a video that was, you know, made by someone on that grade level team, or that is from the internet, like a Khan Academy or another resource that's been vetted. And that might then support them in engaging in an activity. So we're trying to develop sort of a suite of different options for what that day could look like, so that it's not just sit and churn through kind of homework or worksheets. Like, that's not the vision. I don't know if anyone else on our team?
Oh, I'll just add too, it goes back to, so we have our, you know, educators, we have our educator support professionals. And one of the, you know, one of the areas we need to work on is really looking at how we will, how will we deploy all of our, our faculty and staff to support our learners in a variety of situations. So there might be assigned, for example, an educator support specialist for those, those remote learners on the Tuesday, where that particular ESP is checking in, maybe connecting in with families and saying, you know, hey, my son or daughter is having a difficult time staying on task, can you just do a small tutoring session? So those are the types of things we're looking in, into to try to provide as much support as possible. Part of the challenge right now is, is just sorting out the staffing, because we are, we are kind of reinventing what we're doing. I'm confident that, that part of that process, there will be staffing that we can deploy for those, those remote days and really give student support and families support in terms of learning.
Okay, that's great, thanks. Another question I have is, have, do, when considering these models, do we consider maybe having the, a model where the youngest grades come back full-time in person? You know, we've seen a lot of districts around the country kind of feeling that out. Was, was that a consideration at all?
So, yeah, I mean, yes, we, we've considered everything, I would say. But those are ongoing conversations about, you know, the idea that that it could be different for different age groups. One thing I will add is that, given the nature of our preschool program, when I, we talked earlier about a limited number of students would be able to attend more frequently, our preschoolers would be attending to the extent possible in terms of safety and health every day. So right there, we're talking about our youngest children would be in school every day to the extent that it's feasible in terms of safety and health. But that, but the, in terms of uncoupling the different grade levels, we haven't gone there yet, but it's not that it hasn't been discussed or, or isn't, you know, one of the options. I don't know, Greg, if you?
No, I would say that, again, you know, what does that learning environment look like when you have twenty kindergartners in masks, sitting in rows with, with limited movement, with a teacher in front of, of the classroom? So I think it goes back to Erin's point around really trying to paint a picture of what it might look like, because it's going to look very different versus where if you have half the number of students, for example, there's just a lot more flexibility in space and room. So those are the things we're considering. But I also want to make sure people remember that, that we're, we're talking about three models. We're talking about a hundred percent in person, a fifty percent hybrid, and then a remote. The goal really is to move back to a hundred percent in person. So our goal is to, again, if the health metrics allow, to get students back into school as soon as possible and safest way possible. But through all of our analysis around, around safety and protocols and all of the, the changing routines that, that teachers have, that students will have, that families will have, we felt like the hybrid model even in grades K and one to start the year was really the most beneficial model for, for teaching and we believe learning.
Okay, great. And then my last question was, given, you know, whichever model we use, so I guess this applies to all of them, like, are we still going to be able to at different grade levels be able to do the exact kind of curriculum we would, would have done not in a pandemic? Or are we going to have to kind of weed out some of the, oh, this would have been nice to do in science class, but it's not strictly needed for, to meet standards? And, you know, are we going to have to do some kind of that with our curriculum?
You know, the, the goal and sort of our charge is to to try to teach the whole curriculum and to teach the standards and to meet the full requirements. And this is sort of our charge from DESI. And I think though, in the conversations, there's been a lot of acknowledgement of the fact that our students have been out of school for a long time. And one of the things we're going to need to do is to build stamina again for the learning process and for the experiences and to assess where our students are, meet them where they are and support them in progressing. So there's a lot of talk about, you know, there's a lot that we're not going to know until we're sort of in the process about kind of where we're starting and where we're going, but we're going to have to do things differently. And so that's why we're going to take a lot of time together with teachers and a lot of collaboration to say, how do we teach the same things with less in-person time? And, you know, continue to progress through the standards. And that's going to be a lot of the work of the professional development and the collaboration that'll be ongoing and not, I mean, quite frankly, you know, there's, there's, it's going to, it's just doing it before school starts is not going to be sufficient. We are going to need to support our educators and create the times for collaboration throughout this, throughout the year so that we can continue that process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the full remote learning model. So if the health metrics pushed us back to full remote, we, as we have been discussing, it would be, again, a very structured, full-school experience. So there are lots of aspects of this that will be much more specifically developed at each level. But we wanted to give you a sort of picture of the kind of the big picture framework and guidelines for what we're thinking about. So the school day will have a start and an end, so there'll be a schedule. Students will have a schedule, and just like we would, you know, in, in, in person, teachers have a schedule. So there's sort of the student-facing schedule and the teacher-facing schedule. And they move through their day following that schedule. And I talked about some of this a little bit with talking about that Monday teacher facilitated remote day in the hybrid. And that is more akin to the, all of the days in a full-remote learning model. So they would have, you know, structured learning time that meets the a hundred and seventy days. The, I forget now the number of hours that is when you divide it up, but it's, you know, the full number of hours and again, teaching all of the standards. Those, the teacher-directed synchronous, so teachers being live with students would happen multiple times per day for our elementary students. And at the middle school level, they would be synchronous, you know, daily with each class. And as I talked about earlier, figuring out different patterns of, you know, whether it's starting synchronous and then getting to work on something or breaking into groups, it can look all different ways. The, let's see, so those, in terms of support services, through, we'll talk more in-depth, Marie will talk about this more in-depth after, but throughout all of these models, students will be receiving any services in their individual education programs or our English learner, our English language learners will be receiving the supports that they typically receive in person. And to the extent possible, we will maximize the in-person instruction. If, even if the whole school is in full remote, if there are students that we are be able to bring in, we will be bringing them in to the extent possible. And I spoke about the accountability piece earlier, so I think I won't go back to that, but just the, you know, the accountability is there on, you know, and that's really on the parent's side as well as on the teacher's side. The same way that parents, you know, have to get their kids to school physically and get them up and get them on the bus. The same will be true with remote learning, is that we're going to need to get them up, they need to get dressed, they need to get ready. And there's the same sort of expectations. And then, you know, it's the same thing in terms of grading and assessment, which I talked about earlier. The, there will be much more specific schedules coming from the schools at each level. Just like you would have a schedule in person, you'll have a schedule for remote and that encompasses the whole day. It will include lunch, it will include breaks, it will include specials, it will include all of those activities if they can be done virtually. And, you know, sort of the full complement of experiences. I think I'll pause and see if there are any questions first.
Through the chair, I just had a question about the support services, so I'm not sure if, if Marie's going to be touching upon it later, but just about IEPs. What about IEP meetings? Like, if there's no visitors allowed in school, are all meetings going to be done virtually, or how is that going to be allowed?
So Marie is going to speak in a few minutes, so I think what I'll do is just let
No problem.
Now heard it, and she'll come back to it.
Yep, perfect, thank you.
All right. Okay, so the standalone remote learning program. So standalone remote, as I explained in the beginning, is the concept that we recognize that there are students who will, from the get-go, say, even though the school community may be starting in a hybrid, my child, for various reasons, needs to, to be remote. This will be something that, as we said earlier, we will be asking families and asking them to let us know, because without those actual numbers and knowing the grade ranges and the specifics of the students and the specific needs of the students, we can only do so much planning. We're also highly dependent on understanding the staffing. So as we understand which students are no longer part of a hybrid model, or, you know, yeah, when we know which students are no longer part of the hybrid model, it then allows us to look at the staffing across both models and say, okay, so where, how do we deploy our staff to meet the needs of our full range of students across the programs? So we are, you know, exploring a lot of different possibilities related to this. And again, it's, there's a lot of work in progress. The state is going to be providing an option that provides curriculum and instructional, well, you know, they honestly haven't told us that much, other than that they are providing an option. I think there's going to be actually two options related to this standalone remote, and that is supposed to be released in the next few days. So we are waiting for that information. At the same time, we've already been looking into a few other options separate from the state. One is thinking about ways of organizing groups of students across schools. So for example, in the elementary and the middle schools, figuring out what is the full complement of students that need to be in a program like this. And essentially making classes or groups of students across schools in, as a way to group them and then be able to figure out the staffing and the curriculum and assessment resources that we would need to be able to support those students in a fully-remote program. Additionally, we are looking at curriculum materials, assessment materials, sort of third-party vendors that have the materials that would particularly in the secondary area, be able to provide the full range of courses. So we can obviously end up with a lot of different needs for the students who end up in a full, in a standalone remote and not necessarily have exactly the right staff to match those needs. So we are also looking at whether we would be able to fill in gaps by using some some curriculum and assessment materials that might be provided by third-party, you know, providers that we would then oversee and work with and have our teachers using with our students. So it is a lot of different options that we're exploring that will probably get combined together. But there's a lot of missing information still that we are trying to move closer to having, to be able to, I don't know, Greg, if you have anything to add to this?
I'll just add that the remote, the standalone remote learning guidance came out on July twenty-fourth. So although we've been doing a lot of thinking about it, you know, we really got, we really received more direction from the state this past Friday. And we're confident that, again, you know, we really need to look at parent, parents signing up at student enrollment. We need to look at our staffing. We know that there'll be some staff members, faculty and staff who, because of an underlying condition or medical condition, will not be able to attend work. And, you know, we're looking at deploying some faculty and staff potentially to, to take this, undertake this remote learning option. But again, it's going to be a sorting type of a dynamic where once we have families enroll children, then we can start sorting and creating groups and classes and, and assign teachers to those.
And the only other thing I'll add is that one of the most common questions about this aspect of the program is, you know, if I decide to opt my child into the standalone remote for whatever reason, is there the option to transition back to if the, if everybody else is in a hybrid? And the answer is yes, but what we would say is that it will be, you know, it will be in consultation with the school system, meaning that there's obviously a lot of implications in terms of both the health and safety standards, but also implications for that child in terms of the continuity and coherence of their learning experience. So we would want to work together with families to be able to honor those, those, those decisions and those transitions, but to do it in a way that both maintains the health and safety standards and, you know, takes care of that child and, and their learning needs.
So this is Katara again. So if, if I may, I just have a question about this. So I think that one of the reasons it had occurred to me about having an updated survey was because of this option and getting a sense of how many families were going to, were going to choose to do this, because even in the last survey, there was really a significant number of families that either were definitive that they were not that they were not going to send their children or they were undecided, which I think we have to assume some, at least some of those might decide not to send their kids. And, um, and so this is a really important component of, I mean, that it really could be a, you know, twenty percent or more of the, given the last survey results. I don't know what, what a new survey would show, but, um, you know, it's, it's just, that's a lot of students we're, we're thinking about here.
It is, and it's, I was just going to say, and it's, it's such a challenge, right? Because when you talk about, if you, if you're talking about twenty percent of students, um, you're, you're solving a different puzzle than if you're talking about five percent of students. And when you know which the students are, so it is a really tricky tension between trying to give people enough information to make a decision and us needing enough information to specify the program, right? So that's, that's the, the, you know, balance that we're trying to find.
And I'll just add that, you know, when we administered the survey, it was, and as you mentioned, Katara, a couple of weeks could feel like a year. Um, and many, many families were responding, you know. I, I want to wait until what the, to see what the health metrics look like before making a decision. So, um, what we're hearing, um, you know, is for families who do not think hybrid is, is the right model for them for family reasons and safety reasons, that they really wanted a standalone remote option. And that's what we're trying to provide. And our prediction is we'll probably have between five and seven percent of families selecting this option. Um, but, but our, our thinking is that if we do offer a hybrid, most families will select hybrid. Um, and again, we feel comfortable, we don't have all the answers sorted out, comfortable that we'll be able to staff it well and provide good experiences for students in this model.
Right, can I ask a question? I know other districts have explored, and I think at one time we had even explored teaming up with surrounding communities and kind of pooling together this remote learning. Is that still on the table?
It is, and, and I think, um, Stephanie has been working with Westboro and Hopkinton and a couple surrounding towns around, you know, can we make this, uh, kind of a, a collaborative effort among districts and surrounding community? And Stephanie, you can speak to that work.
Yeah, so that, it is an ongoing conversation. Um, and as you can imagine, has a lot of layers of complexity to it. Um, from everything from sort of a human resources perspective of, you know, now our students interacting with faculty, um, who are not actually employed by us, um, to continuity of sort of education questions around everything from learning platforms and technology and syncing those things up. Um, so we, so we haven't given up on it. Um, but I think we have to also recognize that while we're having the conversations, it's, it is incredibly, um, there, there's a lot of layers that it would take to figuring it out. Um, it, it would be a big project if we had no other project on our plate. It's the way I would put it, but it's, but we're, we're still talking.
And, and I'll just add that I think one of the goals, the state, with the state option is try to build those collaborative models where districts can share resources in a, in a closed environment. So we're waiting to get more information on that state option. Um, and hopefully it will allow us to partner with surrounding communities and districts actually across the Commonwealth and making remote learning in this option a good experience for students.
Um, Stephanie, I do have a question about this, and maybe it depends on whether this would be a state option or a district option or community. Um, families who choose to opt in to the standalone program, um, if the, the climate changes and either, you know, everyone goes back to remote, how will this program be affected? And also, is there some sort of time component here? Do people who opt into this program have to stay in this program for the full year? Or is there some, some flexibility? And so the, the, okay, so that we want people to have the flexibility, we need people to have the flexibility because things change, right? The same way the things are going to change for us as a system, they change for individual families and we recognize that. Um, however, there's a lot of, um, different factors to be taken into account with every transition. Um, you know, adding a student to a physical classroom and making sure we can maintain the six feet um, and all of the various implications, um, ha- have a domino effect. So what we will say to people is that it will be, that people will be able to request a transition um, and that it may take a little bit of time for that to happen, um, safely. And that we would also be in consultation with that family, um, to make sure there's, there's sort of continuity for that child's learning. Um, because if they're involved in a, let's say a middle schooler who's involved in a math course, um, that's being done remotely, if we can find the right time to make the transition, given their different courses that they're taking, it might be a smoother transition for that child. So it won't be one day I'm in and the next day I switch.
I, and I'll add that I know that some districts made it a year-long selection. So if you entered into this option, you need to stay in that option all year. With our model, we are allowing that, you know, strategic times with families to move in and out. And if a family wanted to move into a hybrid mode, you know, we want, we want the most number of students to be, um, in person as possible. Um, so we, we are developing that flexibility.
Thank you.
And it looks like Stephanie talks so much, she's frozen, so.
Uh, can I ask one more question?
Can I stop it at the Jessica, please?
Go ahead. Okay, um, do, do the educators here on the call and, um, everybody involved, do you guys have feelings about which, you know, which of these plans are best for basically like the emotional, mental health of our kids? What we think is going to be, um, you know, because we talk a lot about the academics, right? But we're also, we have, we also think about the whole child and social emotional learning and, you know, all this good stuff. And I'm just thinking, I'm just wondering what the opinions are on, on kind of the health aspect of each of these.
Yeah, and I think this is a very complex situation, and I don't want to speak for educators, although I've had many conversations with them over the, you know, the past weeks and months around, um, what learning will look like in the fall. First, I think that, um, you know, we talked about student safety, social emotional wellness was really important. Um, you know, so I think teachers want nothing more than to have students return in person and, and to some degree. But there's also great concern on teachers' behalf about their own health and safety and wellness. So there's this tension, I think, when you talk to teachers and remove any risk, they want teachers in their classrooms. They want teachers, they want to be able to teach in person and make those personal connections. Um, but the conversation, the teachers are concerned, they have not been in classrooms either since March thirteenth and, and the world has changed. So, um, I think in terms of what's best for students, I think some personal connection with adults and teachers and other peers, uh, in person is going to help students, um, in terms of their social emotional wellbeing. But at the same time, there's the tension around, you know, educator safety and, um, and so forth that, that I hear when I talk to teachers. Does that answer your question, Jessica?
Yes, thank you.
Um, hi, I was just going to ask if, um, just as a point of order, um, either from the, one of the chairs, you could just verbally say to some of our, um, audience members that are online, um, what we've agreed to and what we, um, look forward to doing at the end of this call. People have kind of joined in and out, you know, they're multitasking. So if you could just kind of reiterate for the audience as we kind of hit kind of a later time in the evening, what's our plan going forward to review the document that we're viewing their questions and, and going to get back to them?
Sure, so, um, I'm sorry Keith.
Uh, I'll, let, let me start, I don't know if you just saw my message, Mr. Martino, so I'll, I'll start, but you can, you can tear off what I say. Um, so the recap is we'll be releasing the draft information, I believe, later this week, right, Mr. Martino?
Correct.
And so obviously that's a huge milestone to get the information in its, um, in, in all its details for everybody to kind of sink their teeth into. Um, in addition, I just put a message in the chat here, but if there's anybody on the phone, um, I'll just read this off real quick, just, just for the benefit of, of everybody, because I think it centers us on, um, where we're at today, what we, uh, what we would like to do moving forward. So, um, I, I just wrote in the chat, we're glad to see so many engaged participants and lots of good questions. I'm summarizing a few things regarding the process at this point. This meeting was not intended to be a community forum, but with the technology at hand, which is the webinar and the Q and A section, it started to turn into one. So what we are doing is capturing every question submitted. We will do one or both of the following, publish an F A Q, hold a community forum or public hearing slash webinar. There are ninety-three open questions at the moment, that's now ninety-six. Many overlapping and all unsorted by type. It will be quite inefficient if we take those line by line today. So we instead pledge to take those on follow-up. This is, was also stated in a similar form on this meeting's agenda. This is a complex issue with a lot of information evolving quickly. So we'll need to handle this in a series of phases and communications. Thank you for your patience and understanding. So I'll pause there and I'll take any feedback from, uh, Mr. Challen, uh, Chair of Southboro or Mr. Martino regarding, um, those thoughts.
So that's, uh, that's, that's, I think what we agreed to, and I, um, we agree on, we agree on that statement.
Thank you.
And I'll just add that I did, um, move to the last slide because I think it summarizes the next steps in terms of, you know, this Friday, sharing the, the draft reopening plan with the community. Uh, we're also, when we share the draft, we're going to provide an opportunity for, for families to ask questions. Um, we are going to hold community forums next week, the element, elementary level, middle and high school level, um, and answer the questions, whether they're in the chat, uh, this evening or whether they're submitted when the draft plans are shared on Friday. Um, and as, uh, you know, Chairperson Lavelle shared, really try to sort the questions and try to categorize them um, and really get answers at the community forums, uh, that will be held next week.
Any, um, members or panelists have follow-up comments or questions about that process, the current state of affairs? Okay. Thank you, and, and a sincere thanks to everybody attending, uh, for being here. Um, we're not ending yet, but, um, in, in all sincerity, and the questions I've been diligently have been somewhat quiet here because I've been diligently, um, capturing, taking that on personally to capture all these questions, um, being put in the Q and A and the chat. So, um, thank you very much for your patience.
All right, so we did, um, Stephanie's wifi, um, she's trying to get back on, so hopefully she will be back on in a few minutes. But, so those are the, the models that we're looking at again. It's the hundred percent in person with safety precautions. The hybrid, which is a fifty-fifty, um, split with, um, alternating days for the most part. And then a full remote, and then the fourth option really is a standalone remote. And that's really a summary of, of the models. And as Stephanie mentioned, the models are designed so that we can, um, move between models depending on what the health metrics tell us. So if the health metrics, um, are, are rising in the wrong direction and we are in a hybrid model, we can shift to a remote and maintain schedules and maintain students' experiences without, um, you know, without, uh, losing time on learning for our students.
For the chair, a question?
Yes, please.
Um, so Greg, you were talking about shifting based on health metrics. Um, and I believe that the state is hoping to put out some sort of matrix for these metrics. Do you know what the progress has, if there's been progress on that front? Also, um, if this would be a building to building decision or whether it be district-wide?
Yes, so, uh, the Commissioner of Education did talk about, um, having some specific criteria at the state level for all districts across the Commonwealth. We have not seen a draft of those, however, it's still early. Um, and we're also working very closely with our medical experts. Um, and we have some frameworks as Plan B, um, just in case that the state does not provide us with some guidance. And we're also working closely with, um, our district physician, Dr. Medina, and our boards of health in terms of what would that criteria look like, um, and is it to make sure it's evidence-based? And then in terms of, um, you know, COVID cases within our school, um, again, our, our Mary Ellen Duggan and Dr. Medina and our boards of health are really looking at, um, developing a rubric so that if, if a case is identified, this is how we respond. Um, and it's clear and it's, it's based on, uh, medical evidence and not just the reaction to, um, an event. So we are working on those documents and I'm not sure if Mary Ellen wants to add anything to those comments.
There are some guidelines already that we'll follow, but, um, we will specify, as you know, we, um, can be stricter than the state guidelines, but not more lenient than the state guidelines that come out. So, um, right now, the state guidelines from Desi are that if, in an elementary school where the one cohort is together all day long for the six and a half hours they are in school, if someone tested positive in that class, then everybody in that class would be considered a close contact. Um, for other instances, it would be doing that contact tracing back for the forty-eight hours before the person was tested positive or became symptomatic and figure out who was potentially within that six foot, like who was sitting beside them for a class period and those kinds of things. So it would be, we're working with the Board of Health very closely for all of that.
Thank you.
So next, um, section of our district reopening plan, um, centers around student support services and English language development. And we'll have Marie Allen, um, speak to this section as well as Rhoda Webb.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to start my conversation tonight by letting everyone know that we have begun limited in-person extended school year services at two of our schools. And we're in our third week of that, uh, of those services. Our staff was trained by Mary Ellen Duggan and Dr. Medina. Uh, there were two sessions for staff before we started that in-person. And, uh, questions from the staff were handled during that process. We were also trained by Keith Lavoy, Director of Operations, on the cleaning protocols. And he also made sure that our buildings were ready to open. As I said, we're in our third week right now, we're also doing remote services for our E S Y students. And that's, uh, we did that several weeks before the, uh, in-person was started. Uh, students are wearing their masks and they're receiving their mask breaks regularly. Uh, and that's all students. Um, and we also, all staff are following the mask, face shield, gloves and gown protocols depending on their interaction with students and their needs. So I thought that was just interesting to, to mention. So we are, uh, when we're going through this school reentry, uh, in the fall, we're looking at districts, uh, that our district is going to adhere to the tenants of special ed law, providing each child with a disability a free, appropriate public education. And what does that mean? It means that the service delivery will be followed and, uh, instruction will be based on the service delivery grid. So we're moving from the model that we did from March through June, where we had, uh, a distance learning plan that combined instruction and supports and resources. What we are concentrating now is on instruction. And the supports and resources will supplement instruction, but will not, uh, will not take the place of it. Uh, and then we're also, uh, students will receive all the services documented in their I E Ps through in-person instruction, remote instruction, or a combination of the two. And currently, um, we, if there are any changes to the way it looks in the service delivery grid, we will be providing notification to parents about how that delivery of instruction will look different. Uh, and then we are following the regulations that were, or, uh, that were, uh, given by the Department of Ed for fall reopening, and that's on the desktop as of July ninth. And that helps us with determining the next bullet, which is to maximize in-person learning to the extent feasible. We are looking at the criteria as defined by the Department of Ed, which which is to identify students with complex and significant needs. And then there are several categories under there that, that describe what those complex and significant needs are. So we are determining high-needs students on our, our forms within E S P E D. And that means that students, they have to meet two of the three criteria. Special ed services constitute more than seventy-five percent of the student's school day. Service providers are special ed teachers and related service providers and/or services provided outside of the general classroom. So that's the first category. The second one is students cannot engage in remote learning due to their disability-related needs. And we have heard from parents, surveys, and through my conversations with parents that some students do fall into that category. And then students primarily need aided and augmented communication, better known as AAC. That's one of the criteria, as well as students who are homeless, foster care students, or students that are duly identified as English learners. So that's, that is what we are going by to, to guide our maximization of the in-person learning. And then in addition to that, we're trying to maximize the in-person learning as, as Stephanie has mentioned before, for all pre-K students. And then what, I think there were some questions that also came across the, the Q and As from before, that for one-to-ones, there was a question about how do one-to-ones work with our students? Are they going to still have to keep six feet apart from them? And the answer is, it depends. And it depends on how the student needs to receive services. And we also have a protocol sheet that was identified by the Department of Ed that says exactly what type of P P E is required when you're working in less than six-foot distance. So there will, there is a combination of masks and face shields and gloves and gowns, and then also jackets. A lot of our, a couple of our teachers are wearing jean jackets to support students in their needs. And students will have in-person opportunities for inclusion in social groups. That was definitely one of the questions. We are shooting for the least restrictive environment, so we do want to maximize the inclusion opportunities for our students. Another question was, would there be Q and A sessions for parents who have children on I E Ps and five oh fours? And right now, we're working as a central office team to determine those information sessions going forward. And it's.
Question for the chair, Marie, about the, the I E P meetings?
Yes. We are going to start remotely because that is our guidance to, to start doing that. We have a lot of practice doing that from the March to June timeline. And a lot of parents thought that that was a great way to go. So obviously, if things change, we can move off of remote. But we are going to start with the remote I E P meetings. We have a lot of technology in place to do that now. We have digital signatures. We have emails that can be sent with password-protected I E Ps if parents so choose to do that. So there's a lot of process that's already in place to do that.
Great, thank you so much.
And then when we're talking about the different cohorts, I, I know that we talked about hybrid versus all-in, all-in versus remote versus then the standalone remote. What we're trying to do is maximize the in-person across all of those models. And then for the standalone remote, that would be a model like that students would still receive services, but it would kind of be like a walk-in service type of thing. So they still could go to their school and receive services if you choose the all-out remote plan. That is not the remote plan, not the, not the other remote plan, but the all-out remote, the standalone remote. You can still receive services through your school. So I think that was another question that I had seen. And then if there are any other questions before we move on to, to Rhoda and English language development.
I do have a couple of questions, Marie. This is Lauren. So earlier Stephanie was essentially talking to the point of, you know, our response in the spring was more emergency response. And now if we do any sort of remote this fall or this school year, it would be more of a planned response. And how there was inconsistencies throughout the classrooms with face-to-face times. So how do you envision our students who need, who are on I E Ps, who just need more of that interaction with their teachers if we're in any sort of remote setting?
So we are not following the supports and resources model. We, we're not using that as a basis for instruction anymore. That's a supplement. So it would be through synchronous and asynchronous instruction. So it would be video clips of a class, of a, of a lesson, if that's appropriate for a certain student. It has to be individualized. Or it can be direct, you know, direct contact with the remote support as well as making sure that they follow a schedule. So both Greg and Stephanie mentioned each building will have a schedule and students will be divided between cohorts. They will follow their schedules. But in addition to that, they will also have in additional in-person time so that their service delivery grids can be met. Does that make sense?
It does, yes, thank you, Marie. And a question about paraprofessionals. So in any type of remote setting, what is their role in assisting students?
They receive, they receive, they're overseen by their special ed teacher. So the special ed teacher or the classroom teacher would start the session. And they can go out into breakout rooms like we did before, but there would be more of that. So they can go into breakout rooms and work with their students in the remote. And then teachers have the ability to check in with them in those breakout sessions to monitor what's going on. Really just a model of what would happen in person, but in a remote setting. So, so E S Ps, those are paraprofessionals. They do, not pullouts, but they, they do subsections, kind of like breakout rooms within a classroom. So it would be a breakout room within a classroom, but remotely.
That helps, thank you so much, Marie.
Good evening regarding our English learners. Regardless of the model that we will be in, we will be ensuring that our English learners are receiving English language development as well as structured content instruction that happens in the classroom. And at this time point, we're analyzing the numbers of what the different groups will look like to be able to determine the frequency that the English learners will be attending school in person. The other thing that we're doing is we're going to ensure that our families who need to access this information through interpretation or translation will be also informed about what, what our next steps in the district are going to be.
So next, we're going to talk a little bit about technology, obviously. So Julie Doyle is not able to be on this call tonight. So I'll briefly talk about technology. The first comment I will make is we received a lot of feedback from the surveys around inconsistency in platforms and resources and tools. So we are doing a lot of work around using Canvas in grades six through eight at Trotter and Melican, as well as the high school, and really trying to build common structures for courses so that if a student is taking a class with teacher A, B, or C in Canvas, that there's some structure to that class that parents and students can rely upon. Rather than trying to navigate and try to find information, there's a, there's a reliable structure. In grades pre-K through five, we are going to be using Google Classroom as the, the content management tool. This was, again, a lot of discussion and work with our, primarily our early childhood teachers around what's the best tool? And really decided upon Google Classroom. So Google Classroom will be the consistent content manager, management system for pre-K through five. And then lastly, really providing a lot of opportunities for educators and family, learning opportunities around the tools. So again, the, the launch of the school year, really having professional learning opportunities for our students and our families around how to use the tools, how are they organized? And really provide some consistency. In terms of our web-based, you know, our meeting tools, really, we purchased a system-based Zoom license in the spring. And their purpose behind that really was to allow the district to force security settings on all district users using the Zoom setting. So all meetings are password-protected. Students need to register. There's waiting rooms. There's enhanced encryption. There's some, the company Zoom actually will help us if there's an issue to cut, to track down the issue and really get some big data and make sure it's resolved. So again, that was a shift that we made in June. And I think it's important as we look ahead to potentially remote learning, whether it's in a hybrid or a full remote model. We also made a decision to deploy devices for students. We are moving to a one-to-one. And again, you know, part of the, the challenge that we have is having students not share materials. So each student will have a laptop that will be dedicated to that student. That stu, that laptop will travel to school with a student, travel home with a student. And it'll be the student's primary, primary device. So one of the challenges we heard with families of multiple children, sharing technology, trying to get access to the tools. So we're hoping that this will resolve that issue where if you have six children attending the public schools of Northborough and Southburn, the same family, all six of those, of those children will receive us a laptop. And lastly, student online safety. So cyber safety and appropriate use of the internet is something that isn't a part of our curriculum. But as we move to a remote model or a hybrid model where more time is spent online, really making sure those students understand the cyber etiquette and also making sure parents are aware of the avenues. If something happens, how, how a parent can seek guidance or report it to our technology department or principals so it can be addressed. So in terms of technology, really trying to build more consistency, you know, having more secure video conferencing platform through Zoom and deploying one-to-one devices for our students.
Greg, for the one-to-one devices, will that be provided for all students, no matter what model they choose? Even for the standalone remote?
Correct, yes.
And I just wanted to clarify one thing with the one-to-ones, which is that some of them are iPads. So some are laptops or Chromebooks and some are iPads. And, but it'll be consistent across a grade or within a school across a grade that they have the same type of device.
And the last section of the reopening guide is school facilities and operations. And as you can imagine, much of the work that we've been doing to close of, of last year and early parts of July and, and now is really preparing our buildings for the return of students and educators. And Keith Lavoy has done an excellent job in this area. And Keith will give an overview of some of the work that's taking place.
Excellent, thank you, Greg, for this chance. I, I do know we've covered a great deal tonight, so I will try to be succinct with my comments. But I do want to make sure we, we get to this because it is a very important part of our reopening plan. I do want to stress that our custodial staff has done an amazing job of getting prepared. They have gone through some mandatory trainings. I've also collaborated with the principals because the school day as we knew it and how we even come into the building and leave the building is going to be different. And it's important to also know that the best-laid plans are only best pans when they're in practice and they're, and they're tested. So I think we're also want to make sure that it's evident that we are not going to just put something in place and let it ride. We're going to be evaluating it constantly. So as you can see from the bulleted items here, I just want to touch on a few of them. These will be highlighted and detailed and more, more in-depth in the plan that you will receive in a day or so. But these are the highlights of it. First, when we're preparing learning spaces, it has been mentioned throughout the presentation that we, we did have strict DESI guidelines that adhere to it. I can say definitively that in a hybrid model, we will able, we are going to be able to sustain six feet of distance between students in each classroom. We were able to take out any unnecessary furniture and take out classroom rugs, things of that nature, and make sure we were spreading out the furniture as much as we could. We also had to be resourceful with our, with the furniture we had. Some of the, some of the tables, especially at the younger grades, might, were more conducive to group work than they were for individual work. So we really had to be resourceful. We looked to all the schools and we'll be sharing desks in order to deploy them over the schools so that we can get the appropriate learning spaces. One of the questions that popped up prior to this meeting was the use of Plexiglas. Plexiglas has been one of those hot and cold items of the summer. Some have said that it's a, a, a great tool to, to keep distance between students. And others are saying, well, it's another place, another touch point and another area where the virus could sit. So we, we are not going to be putting Plexiglas into our classrooms. Instead, Plexiglas will be used in reception areas instead. Spaces for mask breaks. Mary Ellen did go into this in a little more detail. But, you know, when we're looking at all ten of the schools, we are considering alternative spaces for our mask breaks. Utilizing the outdoors whenever possible is certainly a key component of that and making sure we're, we're adhering to the guidelines of the six feet of distance. So, you know, looking at everything from gymnasiums to auditoriums, to cafeterias, outdoor spaces, courtyards, things of that nature are in play for that. We had the incredible fortune, I know Greg has mentioned it, that we had a Northborough parent who is an air quality engineer join us. He's done a lot of analysis of a lot of educational institutions in the area and in the state doing the same type of thing, reviewing their H V A C systems and making sure that they are ready to welcome back, you know, students and workers. So when, when he was doing the evaluation, and by the way, I, I learned a tremendous amount of H V A C knowledge in the last couple of weeks, he paid close attention to the health offices and what were also becoming commonly known as the medical waiting rooms. Really wanted to focus to make sure that the airflow was proper. What we're going to be doing in those spaces is providing better-than-HEPA filtration for both of those spaces in each of the schools and making sure that any exhaust is not recirculated, but is going directly to the outdoors. These are two of the firm recommendations that we have. And I can say that all ten schools are going to be able to comply with that. The next item is related to his study. We did, in our going, classroom to classroom to make sure that every one of the univent systems, whether they are in windows or in the ceiling, are working properly. We're also checking with our control systems to make sure that they are all working properly. We do have a varying degree of different types of systems in this, in the schools. You know, Lincoln Street School, for example, is brand new and the outside air that comes in there is very strong. And some of our older buildings, we've got to make sure that the univentilators are working properly and the exhaust fans are working properly. But I can say that in combination with our custodian staff, as well as our H V A C contractors, we will definitely have achieved that by the, the time of reopening. Actually, in fact, in many schools, it's happening right now and then even started back in May. So that's the valuation process of changing filters and making sure louvers were opened and responding well to the controls has all been part of our preparation work. As far as hallways and lockers, Mary Ellen alluded to it. The size of the hallways will dictate whether or not we can be one-way or two-way traffic. Each school is going to have that as part of their plan. And a key element of that is teaching staff and students of how to respond in those types of situations. So that will certainly be part of the education campaign that we're going to have to get into. As far as lockers for students, especially at Trotter and Melican, both principals are going to restrict access to the lockers and make sure that they're only used when necessary. It also is going to include a staggered schedule to make sure that students aren't congregating around the lockers so we can ma, maintain the distance that we need. But I can see certainly during the winter months, we're going to need to store our winter jackets somewhere. And that's the time definitely where we'll be utilizing. But I can see certainly during the winter months, we're going to need to store our winter jackets somewhere and that's the time definitely where we'll be utilizing the lockers. I also suspect that the schools are going to be having students carry materials in backpacks. That will be something that's going to be allowed in classrooms and we have worked that into our spacing ma- matrix and making sure there's. There's room for backpacks as part of their personal space. The other thing that's going to be different, and I think we've seen this all over the place is signage, there's absolutely going to be reminders. For hand washing etiquette, mask wearing and socially distancing, we've been able to procure some of. Some nicer signs laminated and ready to go, a few of them are coming in as we speak and I expect them to be. Ready within the next couple of weeks. Actually, it was just mentioned about shared items, I think that's a key element of this. A lot of the schools are putting together protocols where we can limit the number of shared items, especially supplies at the younger grades. These are things that are going to be parceled out and made sure that they're individualized as much as possible. It might even be a case where some items just remain at home and when the students are doing remote work, they'll be engaging with those materials versus when they're at school. And the biggest one is absolutely the school cleaning, it it's been mentioned before. We we have reviewed our current protocols and are enhancing them tremendously to follow the guidelines that we've been reading right along. We've also been able to purchase some technology, the electrostatic sprayers, which I'm sure many of you have heard a lot about. Allow us to disinfect the space or like an average classroom within eight to 10 minutes. The material that is dispersed through that allows it to wrap around all edges of items. And disinfect it within a dwell time, so the other thing I learned a lot about was dwell time. And when a disinfectant is allowed to sit on a surface, how long it takes to be effective and and kill the virus, so. These are all been part of the things that we have engaged in. We will have the enhanced cleaning protocols completely completed and and ready to go within within a week or so. And also the HVAC checklist is going to be part of that, which will get into our daily. Monthly and quarterly checks on our on our system and that'll be definitely part of that. Why don't we, actually Greg, why don't we stop there for a second, can we go back to that last slide and I guess I'll can I can entertain some questions about whether it's HVAC or. Anything related to that?
Ke- Keith, I have a question, I don't know if it comes under, I would think under facilities operations and that is usually when you. Do back to school, there's always a review because you have new students coming in of fire drills. Evacuation plans and you know what that always is, is let's get out of the building as fast as we can, so. I didn't know if that would come underneath this, but has any, I I know you've given thought to it. How do we do that with still doing six feet distance if we want to get the kids out of the building as soon as possible?
You know, absolutely Joan, I think that there's two things connected to that. We are connecting with our local fire departments, not only on the fire safety codes that we've got to follow with the adjusted. Classrooms, you know, making sure egresses are open and everything else. We will be taking a tour of the building with each town's building inspector as well as the fire. Fire personnel to make sure that we're doing all those sort of things, when it comes to drills. We are going to be responsible for having drills with the regular type of schedule. And the thing I think we're going to consider is the timing of the drill. And what I've learned about that as being the principal of Trotter is, you know, making sure it doesn't necessarily have to do with speed. It just has to do with efficiency, so if even if we are staggered slightly. We can be able to get out probably even safer than we would during a normal drill, so the the feeling on it is that. You know, even with a slight delay of of a few seconds to minutes to stagger. The release of students outside is is going to serve us well for both the distancing and the safety of the evacuation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I add a little onto that too, I think we need to remember that it's less than. For greater than 10 to 15 minutes when you're in close contact, so. If it was an emergency, it would just be getting out of the building and once you're outside, those lines would have to be. The kids would be spread out six feet apart outside.
Yep, good point, Mary Ellen.
Thank you. I have a question, it's Katara. So hey Keith, so could you just speak a little bit more to the issue of the spaces for the mask breaks? And also, this also ties into a question I've had about lunch. And when obviously masks will need to come off and I'm I'm just trying to visualize. What our current thinking is about how that's going to work, it might be somewhat building dependent, but. Since we're relying so much on masks to sort of protect everybody. How are we thinking about these periods of time when the masks will be off?
Great, great, great point, I think what it and it is going to be building dependent, I think the the principals have thought along and hard about what their regular day looks like. And then what this new day will look like in that incorporate that is going to be the mass breaks. You know, whether like, let's say in elementary school and they get to a point of the lesson where. You know, half the students would would be able to go outside for a few minutes and the other students would remain in the classroom and continue. If half, let's say if we're in a hybrid mode and there are 12 students in the classroom, if six of them go outside. Then the six remaining back in the the room are going to be able to spread out even greater than six feet. So they could take a little break with their mask at that time, so. It's all types of different variations like that, I can also see it connected to any type of recess that's going to going to be scheduled. And utilizing outdoors, I think is going to be big, we are evaluating not only our indoor space but our outdoor space. To see how much we can do to make sure that these types of things are happening safely, so. Principals have done a lot of different thinking around that and it will be building specific, so. I think the key is that there's enough time to get the genuine break. But also to make sure that there's enough space so the students can spread out appropriately and it's properly supervised, so it's a three prong thing.
And and does that also apply to lunch?
Yeah, lunch, I'm going to talk a little bit about food services. But yes, it it absolutely will and 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 in the cafeteria as we know it. Will is going to look a little different and I'll share that in a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Keith, regarding outdoor spaces that you said you've evaluated. Have you really looked at even setting up some outdoor classrooms, I know other towns have talked about renting or purchasing tents. To really maximize on days that the kids can be outside even during learning time?
Absolutely, we have, we we have investigated that and I think everyone else in the Commonwealth has as well. If you try to, if you're, if you can find a rental tent, I think it'd be worth a million dollars right now. We are finding that across the board, the vendors that we normally go to are are completely out. And anything that can be purchased has been, not that I would necessarily would want to buy a circus tent, but certainly that it's it's just not available right now, so. We're we're also thinking that, you know, with the fall, you know, we might be able to get a couple of weeks out of it. But it really wouldn't be worth the investment to to purchase a tent, we we have other ways of doing it and I think the principals. Have been pretty creative about how they're going to be able to do that, even different times of day. The the building provides shade in one spot, so you know, different variations like that are being considered.
And my other question is, I thought fans in the classrooms were going to be off limits. However, the dusty guidelines that they came out on July 22nd and I may be misreading this or I don't understand what this is. It does say something about fan boxes in the windows, is that not a fan like I'm thinking a fan?
Probably a box, you know, a box fan or a standing oscillating fan are kind of the two that are most common. We are going to allow both in the classroom, but they're going to be under strict guidance. If a box fan is in the room, especially in a window, it's got to be exhausting. So we got to make sure that it's exhausting the air from the space, not pulling air in. Because what's happening with a fan and and Kalash says it very well, is it creates a turbulence that is pushed over people. And that's that is an absolute no no, so. Any of the oscillating fans that are more typical are not going to be allowed to be oscillating. They got to be fixed on on the teacher in order to be be allowed in the classroom, it can't push air over people. Are there any other questions related to facilities?
Keith, I just saw a a question that I actually had to. How does this affect our Alice drills and things like that, you know, obviously when we do Alice drills. There's not six feet of distance all the time, you know, are we rethinking those a little bit?
Yeah, we have been, I I have been in contact with with our local authorities about how this is going to be, I I don't think, you know. Considering the the stress that everyone i- is under right now, I don't think we're going to hammer that one too hard. Although although we have been talking about it in in more intimate conversations amongst the administrators. And we know we've got to be prepared for for just about anything and one of the things is Alice. So like Mary Ellen said, if it is a genuine emergency, you know, we're we're getting out of the building. And and that's going to be a key point of it, so those are the types of conversations that we've had with the NASA team.
Keith, this is Kamali speaking. Question one is, we've been pretty creative so far about our facilities plan, do you have you thought about? Instead of having personnel in the building, maybe giving some sort of virtual. Look to the community on how things could be presented. And you could talk a little bit about that. And then my second question is, well, I'll let you start with the first one, please.
Do you mean to to kind of show what a typical classroom is going to look like, is that what you mean?
Right, so in in the envisioned model, you know, with student death, you know, edge of chair to edge of chair. And then you'd put a mock person here at the the teacher at the six foot mark, then you could do like, you know. Okay, part two, this is what the hallway situation might look like, you know, have you thought about maybe just doing that by video? And then parents would and community members could look at it that way?
We we actually have, a couple of the local communities have 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 done that and we are actually connecting with them to see how they got it done or. Or what types of things, what what was their thinking behind it, I thought it was a very creative idea and it would give, you know, parents a a an image of what. The classroom will look like, you know, it's pretty amazing when I've gone into the classrooms that have set up, it is very different from what we're used to, I mean. All the work that's been done so far is to bring students together, now we're pulling them apart, it just looks very different, you know. The 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 chairs and desks are in rows, they're all facing the presentation side of of the classroom. And they're as far apart as they can possibly be, but I think that's a great idea. We are exploring that and I expect that we will do something, some type of variation of that, but obviously we don't have a ton of time. To be incredibly creative, but I think we can at least get some images out to the families.
I agree with you Kamali, that's what one of my things was is that with parents not being able, visitors not being able to go into the schools. And see their kids' classroom, you know, we're not going to have the parent nights, you're not going to have those open houses and I think it might. Help parents be able to make a decision or not make a decision if they can see exactly what it is. That their their kid's classroom is going to look like and what they're going to.
I think that's a great idea and we'll we'll try to get that out to everyone as soon as possible, perhaps. Use our website to deliver those types of images or or videos.
Thank you.
Of course, did you have another question?
Yes, earlier in the week, there was some explanation from the a gentleman around, you know, fans. And what turbulent air was versus other types of air. And if you probably recall that better than I do, but could you talk a little bit about the. Fans blowing air versus windows blowing air versus, you know, our AC units blowing air?
Yeah, so you know, and it is quite quite an education you can get, I mean, the key to it is is always been about getting. As much fresh air into the into the room as possible and that's going to, that's going to be measured by CFM. And these, any type of fan that can, you know. In all of our classrooms have a fan unit of some type that's bringing in fresh air. We want to make sure that those louvers are as opened as possible, so we're getting in as much fresh air as can be. When it comes to AC units, AC units are recycling a lot of air. And the key to that is if you do have an air conditioning unit, whether it's a unit that's in a window or or part of the actual infrastructure. You have to make sure that the fresh air that's complementing that recirculated air is not allowing it to become stagnant. But is allowing it to exhaust as much as possible, what it does though is it requires more energy. To then keep the the room air conditioned, because you are going to be bringing in additional outside air. So that's one of the things that I have learned learned from this, so the key to it all is making sure that that fresh air source is as. Positive as it can be. We're going to go on the transportation, well, we talked about the buildings, now we have to talk about how we're going to get there. Transportation has been a an interesting one, the guidance for transportation just came out last week. It also had some, you know, some good images and drawings of of what we're anticipating. Where students are going to seat and how things are going to go, but here is a, you know, a very, a very brief run through of it. First of all, any student that is taking the bus to school will be required to wear a mask. We are also encouraging as part of our reopening plan that parents, you know, consider driving their students to school. Which create a whole nother set of issues that we'll we can talk about a little more. You know, whether it's staggered arrival times or staggered dismissal times, this is all going to be part of the individual plants or locations for drop off and pickup. But all students will be allowed, required to wear a mask while they're on the bus. We're going to be boarding the bus by way of route, so and there will be assigned seats. So if a student is the first one to get picked up, they will be sitting in the back and then it'll work their way to the front, this will reduce the amount of contact. That students can have with each other, the thing that's up in the air right now is where students are going to sit. Now, for every seat on a bus, there's going to be a maximum of one student unless they are siblings. Then they can sit a maximum two to a seat. And this is going to be the way that the the buses will be arranged and we will be having assigned seats, so I'm going to be working closely with our transportation coordinator, Gene Pinto. And the school principals to make sure we assign seats appropriately and also working with the bus company. They have been incredible so far, from last spring helping us with the food deliveries to even this summer. We've already had about five or six meetings, I was on the phone with our bus contractor, NRT, North Reading Transportation just yesterday. Going over all the stuff that I'm talking about right now and and their opinion on a lot of the different matters. So you know, we have had that constant communication going. The other thing that's going to happen on the bus is that the windows are going to remain open. And this is something that obviously for the first few months isn't going to be an issue, but as things become cooler out. You know, we're going to have to a- adjust accordingly, so between the windows being a couple inches cracked. To the ventilation on the top of the buses being open, all those things are going to be part are are part of the D E C guidelines. Certainly when we talk about transportation, we don't, we don't forget at all our students with disabilities. And if they are traveling by van, like Mrs. Allen said earlier, we have a. Started our E S Y program and transportation is involved under guidelines and we're watching that being executed, so. The students that ride vans to 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 school have to be one per seat, the monitors in special locations. And they've gone through a lot of different cleaning protocols to make sure that things are working and operating well and in week three, we've been incident free and things are going well. The next piece is the cleaning and disinfecting, as you can imagine, this is a very important part of the transportation operation. What we're going to be asking NRT to do is after the AM runs are complete, that all of our buses are disinfected. That disinfection will also happen at the end of the PM buses, bus routes. However, in between the routes, the tiers, as as soon as they've dropped off at a school and heading on to the next tier of the bus route. All the high touch points will will be disinfected and that is something that I'm working with the bus company on and making sure we we cross Ts and dot Is. The bus company also shared that they are going to be using technologies similar to us with the electrostatic sprayers. To make sure that they're taking care of the the buses as best they can. And the last piece is the bus registration, we started it back in May, that we've asked all families to register if they are interested in taking. Bus transportation to school, we will have a continuation of that as we unfold. And want to make sure that we're capturing all the families that will need a bus. And if they don't need a bus and are planning to drive their child to school every day, we're going to want that type of information, so. We're going to be, that's going to be part of the communication that Superintendent Martino is sending out. And that we will be gathering over the next couple of weeks, so we can really hone in and get good routes established for our different schools.
I have a question?
Absolutely.
So will the tiers for busing still be the same, so for example in Southborough, like Finn and Woodward are on the same tier, will that still be the same for this coming school year?
Yes, it will. The tiers, the tiers will be the same, but the routes are going to be different based on the capacity levels that we have to achieve.
Okay, thank you.
Approximately between, it's about 24 students per bus is roughly what we're at right now.
Just a quick question around the hybrid, the hybrid versus hundred percent in person.
It's just a question around the hybrid, the hybrid versus hundred percent in person um capacity that we have for our current busing.
Correct, all right. So if we were to be in a hybrid uh model, we would absolutely fall within the capacity limits that DESI has set. However, if we're at full capacity at a hundred percent, um, we would not have enough buses to meet the DESI guidelines.
Keith, I have two questions.
Sure.
Uh, first is regarding kindergartners. Typically, they are seated at the front of the bus. If they are the first to board, will they be expected to go to the back?
As of now, yes.
Okay, my other question is, I know DESI guidelines um encouraged, not required districts to look at putting monitors on um each bus, kind of to help with the seating and making sure people are distancing and keeping their masks on. Have we considered that or will that be responsible, you know, the bus driver to be responsible for that?
We're 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 taking a look at it right now, but as as of now, I think we're going to be collaborating closely with NRT. Um, and if there are situations that arise, we can respond accordingly. But you know, it's kind of, it's kind of a, there's a pro and con to it. You're adding another person into the mix. So you're taking a seat for capacity and we want to make sure that they're an employee of ours. So you know, there's, there's a lot of different things uh that we're considering for it. And the first we saw uh of bus monitors being considered was was last week. So we haven't had a really a time to pick that one through entirely.
Okay.
And Keith, for families who already filled out bus registration, um who have changed their mind either way, are they able to do that?
Yes, they can absolutely, Lauren. Um, so we are going to be opening up um a connect, a connection with our central office team, especially Jean Pinto, our transportation coordinator. She's the one that's been handling all of that. And we would absolutely allow a family to change their mind as we were going to anyways, but especially now considering the conditions we're under and the decisions that people are going to have to make in the next couple of weeks. So that will be available and will be prominent on our website to make sure it's clear.
Thank you.
All right, through the chair.
Yes, please.
So just a follow up to Aaron's question around kindergarten in general. So it is, a lot of questions have been um centered around tuition for kindergarten. So if we enter into hybrid mode, it will be a recommendation to the school committee to waive the tuition fee during that period of time. But again, that would be ultimately a decision of the school committee, but that would be our recommendation. And we've also set up um a si- situation where uh payments can be made monthly. So it's a little bit easier uh for us to move in and out of modes. If we start in a hybrid mode, not charge tuition. And then if we move into a hundred percent mode, um start charging tuition. So I know that's been a question of many parents. But again, that will be brought to the school committee for a vote.
Can I ask a question about the staggered um start times and end times? Like it, I understand the need for that, but how would that affect kind of our time on learning? If we have to be, and I guess it's kind of one of my biggest questions of when we're considering these different plans is, you know, with the hybrid plans, how much time are we going to have to be building into schedules for, you know, it taking longer to get to classes, it taking longer to arrive at school, taking longer to leave school? How, what's the thinking behind that?
So I'll just a general comment. In terms of a hybrid model, we feel like we can run a typical schedule uh for the most part, even with all of these accommodations. However, in a model where it's a hundred percent and if the restrictions of one student per bench on a bus, that could add tiers and a cost in terms of adding more buses in the school day. But I I believe that in a hybrid model, um, time on learning, uh students traveling to to um and from school will be very similar. And I just uh want to thank Jean Pinto, she's been fabulous and Keith for their work around routing. And I think they've allowed to build some efficiencies into that process.
And Greg, can I add one thing to that, which is just that at the level of the school-based plans, um, the principals and their school-based teams have been working incredibly hard on all of these kinds of specifics. And so at the middle school level where there are larger number of kids, they have already mapped out um procedures for staggering when kids are in hallways so that it doesn't just slow everyone down, but things are um, you know, moving smoothly and efficiently. So there's a lot of details being ironed out, school by school, by the principals and their teams um so that we can take, make the most out of every day.
And this is kind of a sad question, but um will we be able to see these school-based plans before we make decisions? And will parents be able to be, see these school-based plans too?
So right now, um, they're in draft form. Um, and it'll be part of the larger, our district reopening plan. Um, but many of these plans will be fluid um over the next couple of weeks. Um, one of the reasons why it's important for us to kind of adopt a district reopening plan is so building principals and schools can interpret this and translate it into what it means for us, for the school. So um, they, they will be available eventually, um, once they're completed and 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 ready. But the first plan that we're releasing again is the district reopening plan in draft format.
Okay, if there's any other question about transportation, we can move on to food services. So this is certainly something I know, Katara, you brought up earlier, but has been a large focus of um the principal planning that's been going on so far. And I can say definitively that each of the schools does have a different plan. That, but a one key element of the plan is that we do not want students to um eat their lunch in the classrooms. So we have been as creative as possible to create alternate uh eating areas for students to have lunch. Um, DESI in their guidelines did say that, you know, classrooms um were were preferred in some ways because they was able to get the distancing. But we really felt that we wanted to work very hard to provide a an additional area for students to have their lunch. So we're being creative with our furniture to make sure that the cafeterias do have seating at six feet of distance. But we're also going to need other spaces in each of the rooms, like um maybe half of the gymnasium or things like that that would create enough space to have lunches and lunch waves. The other thing that's happening with lunches in the areas that are being considered is additional waves uh to, you know, break students up into different cohorts to make sure that, you know, we do get the spacing and the safety that we need to have. Another element that's occurring is that the free and reduced lunch program is going to continue. Um, we, whether we're in remote or uh hybrid or all in person, we are working hard uh to develop a system where our families that are in need are going to be able to fill out those applications readily. Uh, and we will be responding accordingly, making sure that those students are fed on it on a daily basis. Our system will continue to use My School Box. We are looking to the different technology packages that My School Box provides. And in fact, they are launching some uh products early in the year. It won't be ready until uh mid September, uh but an online ordering feature that would allow parents to uh place the order the night before, which would aid in our preparation process. So we don't want to be adding new things um if they haven't been tested. But certainly, My School Box is a place where we're thinking of being creative. And this also is a good time to remind families, and this will be part of the guidance that goes out about the types of things that should be coming to school. We want to make sure that things are in individual containers and not for sharing. Uh, it also is a good idea to label uh any of the lunch materials that are coming in, like lunch boxes and and things of that that nature, Tupperware, other types of things that would be used to transport the food. We want to make sure that it's done in a safe way, so that will be included in the guidance that we provide. Our food services team, especially Kyle Parsons, who is in charge of our K eight programs, our food services manager, has been thinking since last spring of creative ways of getting individualized uh food to to students. Uh, the packaging, to the utensils, the to the delivery methods themselves. You know, we have really thought through all of that and he is going to be collaborating with each of the principals to make sure that we're matching our expectations with that and as safe of a way as possible and keeping our cafeteria staff safe as well. So that will be part of that. Meal consumption, I I, we do have a protocol for that. Mary Ellen has detailed that as part of the appendix A, but it does require um when students are eating that they do have the six feet of distance and obviously not wearing their masks. So it will follow any type of no mask protocol that we would need uh for for students to consume food. And meals for remote learners, it is clear in the DESI guidelines that we will providing meals for remote learners. Um, and this is a system that will mirror our our spring um ordering system uh but will and but we will not be able to deliver. So the 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 meals that will be available for remote learners is going to be pickup only. And that is the biggest change from what we did in the spring. And I think collectively, you know, when you think of a cafeteria and how things work and how things operate, you know, we're going to have to have um stations available. We're going to be cleaning the tables uh after each lunch wave and making sure that they're ready for the next. These are all things that we've done before. They will just be enhanced and that we will, we will have other safeguards to make sure that it is happening at every turn. So in general, you know, between buses and in food, it's not going to be what we were used to as kids for sure. It's going to look very different. And last piece is uh extended day and recreation. That has been something that has popped up. I have been in constant con- conversations with our extended day uh directors and the offerings that they're able to do. We are, if we are in person in any form, whether it is hybrid or or full, you know, extended day, we'll be able to provide after school and uh for school programming where appropriate. So working closely, they have a separate set of guidelines that they have to follow, but we've been collaborating. And the key is providing them with more space. So if they were just in in a classroom area or an art room or something to that in one of the schools, we're giving them access to our gymnasiums or other areas so they can make sure they 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 meet the guidelines that they have to follow.
Keith, are those numbers going to be reduced? How like we do half capacity? And um another question would be is um they would not be on days the kids, it wouldn't be an option for parents to send their kids to school if not like a daycare type, right? It's only for after school for days that the kids are in school.
Yeah, if we did a hybrid, they're they're very curious about our cohorts and that's going to drive how they are able to do it. I do not believe, because we're going to be able to provide them with more space, I don't think their numbers are going to be cut in half as part of the guideline. It would all be dictated by the amount of space we can get and the the square footage of it. That's, that's the the guidance that they've been given. So I think they're going to be able to be at capacity. But unlike, if we are in a hybrid mode, they would have half the students there, which would likely be, you know, less for them to deal with on a daily basis.
Keith, I have a question going back to the meals for remote learners.
Sure.
Um, um, in the plan that you have, it's on page twenty three, it said that there you would offer them meals to eligible students who are learning remotely. What did you mean by the word eligible?
You know, at first, and this is kind of one of the the pieces that's kind of changing, is it 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 may be just available for students that are uh free and reduced lunch. Um, but there's a lot of things that are happening and we may be able to get a waiver from the USDA. The Commonwealth is applying for a waiver through the USDA that would allow all school meals to be free. Um, and if that is the case, we're going to be able to offer it to all students, but that is pending.
Okay, thank you.
So that at this time, we created this, it's eligible, but it very well could become, all students would be uh eligible.
And then it would still be the same, though. The parents would have to come to pick up the meals. We would no longer be having a bus delivering them.
Well, a- at this time, I don't think it's going to be possible. If it were possible, we would definitely try to entertain it as best we can. But at this time, it doesn't seem to be able to work considering we'll be, you know, still doing our AM and PM runs. I don't think there's going to be vehicles available to do those lunch wave deliveries.
Keith, can I just comment to one of the, if we were to enter into hybrid model, sending home um a lunch with a student for the day that is a remote day? So again, trying to think creatively around how we can provide um our students with food in a manner that's safe and and provides access to lunch.
Yep, I just had that conversation with the food service manager. So we're going to be talking with the principals of how those students would be able to come down at the end of the day and get their meal for the next day. And that's all about the serving of it and how it's packaged and things like that. But they are looking through creative ways. Greg is right.
And uh, and I know you'll keep us updated on that position from if if the uh federal government would waiver so all students could get free lunches.
Yeah, we're waiting on it and I think the entire Commonwealth is, so yes.
Thank you.
Um, Keith, I see that, so the extended day programs in recreation, we didn't really talk about extracurricular activities, like things that are normally happening, you know, especially, you know, with Trotter and Malickin and um, but also there's usually like rap, well, we we have, you mentioned um uh recreation here, but I guess just, you know, the kinds of activities, like how would that if we were still able to have after school activities in a hybrid model, you know, is there any thinking how that would work yet?
Greg, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's something, I mean, our our primary focus has been reopening, looking at the different models. We have had some preliminary conversations around extracurricular activities. And um they're so important for students. It's oftentimes why students come to school and enjoy and love school. We are looking at reopening and then potentially looking more closely at how we can offer those experiences, whether in person or remote on on off day days if it's a hybrid model. So it is something we're discussing and in developing more parameters around and protocols around. But um right now, it's it's just, it's just that it's been in the discuss- discussion phase. But we do think it is such an important part of of a school program for a student that it is something we will address in the next few weeks and have um some protocols and procedures around.
And I think, I'm not sure if you mentioned this, but I think uh DESI guidelines prohibit any field trips, right as I understand it.
Correct.
That is correct.
Virtual field trips are fine.
Um, a comment or a question for either Keith or Greg? Um, I just want to make sure that nothing you said is misconstrued in regards to getting food services to students that need it. I've seen that you've um really reacted quickly in making sure that during our spring impact by COVID, you know, students that needed it were able to get lunches and meals, et cetera. Could you just kind of go on record and let, you know, everyone know that as, when possible, you know, there are going to, you're going to consider reach partnering with the community, various um support groups, et cetera, to make sure that those that need it can get meals as needed?
Uh, abso- absolutely, a hundred percent. Uh, Mary Ellen has also done a lot of work with the community around that. And uh, it's actually continued over the summer in in different pockets. So, you know, we will, we will absolutely continue that, especially as the school year begins. And, you know, checking, as we're checking in with families, uh, the 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 landscape has changed for many of our families and I think we're going to respond accordingly.
And and Mary Ellen, I'm not sure if you want to um share a few words in this topic because you've done such great work around this.
Yes, so the we're still continuing, we're using the buses, the um different community groups in Northborough and Southborough, the food pantries are still open, we're providing food, there's free meals. The, all of the resources are lifted listed on our COVID nineteen resource page where people, if there is any food insecurity or need for food, they just need to reach out and we can get them the resources they need right now or even when school starts.
Thank you. I I saw that and I felt that that was continue. I just wanted you to state that for the record, thank you.
Glad you did.
All right, so um, so that is an overview of the district reopening plan. And just, um, I know we covered some of this information earlier around next steps. So the goal of this evening was really to uh to provide the community and the school committees with an overview of the draft. The next step is really to um share that the actual draft for the community on Friday. And again, provide an opportunity for community members and families to submit questions. Um, the week of eight, three and eight through eight, seven, we are going to be holding community forums where we can specifically address questions that are asked. There will be three forums, elementary and a middle and high school. And we're, we'll be working on setting those dates tomorrow. Next week, there is a combined school committee meeting. Um, and further conversation will be had around the district reopening plan. And I just wanted to comment that, again, today's plan uh presentation wasn't um talking about what model we were reopening with, but rather communicating to the community that we have a uh plan that addresses various scenarios and models. But rather communicating to the community that we have a uh plan that addresses various scenarios and models. Um, from a hundred percent in person to a full remote to a standalone remote. And that it's really up to the school committee for us to make recommendations, but it will be the school committees who ultimately decides. What that model will look like in terms of the actual reopening. We will communicate on Monday, uh, the tenth, uh, we have to finalize the district reopening plan and submit that to the department. Elementary and secondary education and we will also um, once the plan is finalized, send that out to um families. And then lastly, the week of eight ten through eighteen, eight fourteen. Um, I think there was some really great suggestions around painting a picture of what this looks like in terms of the different models. Uh, for students um and for families so they can make informed decisions. And um, the week of eight ten through eight fourteen, we are going to ask families to um, who are interested in opt-in standalone remote to select in. Um, and that will allow us to begin the planning around what exactly that will look like and what types of staffing will need. Um, and at this time, that concludes our reopening uh plan uh report to the committee.
Right, can I ask one question, something the plan doesn't really talk to, and I think something we know is probably gonna come into play is substitutes. I think we know that there's probably gonna need, be a need for possibly a large amount of substitute teachers, whether teachers are out sick or. You know, they're getting that ten weeks as their daycare is, whatever it may be. Has the district started to actively try to hire subs and what will their training be like? With all these new, it's not like just walking into a classroom anymore, all these protocols. And then the other part of that, is there a plan to kind of hopefully keep subs within the same. Pool or two so that they're not jumping to multiple schools throughout the district?
Yeah, so we anticipate, in a typical year, having sub, getting substitutes is very difficult. So we are, we've uh began early in July really recruiting. Um, our plan is to make sure that each school has a cadre of subs daily, um, that, that just arrive and can be deployed. In any type of scenario. Um, and to your point around training, you know, the training will be essential, so. Our goal is to hire a pool of subs, for example, for Peaslee School that they'll, they'll attend. You know, begin their day there and then the principal of Peaslee will be able to deploy those, those substitutes. That's the plan. Um, and we're recruiting and so is into every other district in, um, in the area. But we're confident that we'll be able to find subs and, and, and have that pool available. Rather than just calling a sub in every day, um, and not sure, not, not knowing who would arrive substituting.
Thank you.
Greg, I also have kind of a general question, you know, is school committee, one of our main things that we're in charge of is the budget. So you probably don't know yet, but I'm just wondering and that'll help, probably help people make decisions too. I mean, we, we do have to think about the budget impact of the different scenarios. Um, what are you thinking about that?
Yeah, so um, we are prepared for that question, so.
I'm not surprised. I mean, I am surprised because this is so much information, but I'm not surprised.
So Becky is on the call, um, and she's been working on the budget implications of um COVID nineteen and also. Um, we have some funding sources that she can kind of talk about what our best estimates are currently with how much um all of this work is costing.
Yeah, so um, we are eligible for two types of grants in both communities. The first is the Esser grant. Um, and that is a, that is based on our Title One funding, so it is a smaller amount of money for each of the communities. Uh, in Southborough, um, the Esser money is just under thirty-five thousand. Um, and in Northborough, it's forty-one thousand dollars. There is also a second grant that we are eligible for and that is um for the school reopening grant. And you may have heard, um, when the, when the commissioner rolled out, um, the initial plans, he talked about a two-hundred and um twenty-five dollar per student. Amount of money that would be available to schools, so they have released those funds. And again, in Southborough, it would be two-hundred and seventy-five thousand, four-hundred dollars and in Northborough, it would be three-hundred and forty-six. Fifty dollars. Um, so we are looking at a, a, you know, a good amount of money. But those funds do have to be spent specifically on COVID nineteen related expenses. Um, the other important thing to point out too is that with the school reopening grant, those funds. At this point in time need to be expended prior to December, the end of December of twenty-twenty. Um, there are conversations that are happening that may allow us to um spread that out. Um, however, I don't think that we are going to, based on some of our estimates, you know, have any difficulty in expending that two-twenty-five per student. Um, we have been collectively working as a, a central office team and kind of trying to anticipate some of the. The needs that we're going to have and just to kind of follow up on Erin's um question about the substitutes. Um, those are two areas that we're looking at, both teacher substitutes and then nurse substitutes as well, having additional nurses in our buildings. Um, and Mary Ellen has worked hard um to come up with a plan for that. So in, we are looking at for teacher substitutes and between teacher substitutes and nurse substitutes in both districts. Um, well over two-hundred thousand dollars, about two-hundred and fifty thousand dollars um in Northborough. And one-hundred and ninety thousand um in Southborough. We have also been, as we've said on the call, been actively purchasing um PPE. Um, that is an ongoing process. Um, and as of um today, we have um purchased about ten thousand dollars worth of PPE. In Northborough and ninety-nine hundred in Southborough. Um, and then we have also been very active in terms of purchasing um facilitying. Um, supplies and cleaning supplies and that includes hand sanitizer, includes the electrostatic um. Cleaning devices that Keith had talked about. Um, and so in both communities, we, we have um purchased about. Um, seventy-two thousand dollars in Northborough and fifty-eight thousand dollars in Southborough, um, just for supplies. Um, so, you know, we are very close to that school reopening um pot of money that is available. Um, based off of these estimates. Um, so. The funds are, are there for us and we're also hearing that there may be additional funding that becomes available. Um, Congress right now is looking at um care block money. Um, and so we are hoping. Um, that that does come down the pipeline, but we have right now come up with a good plan, I think, in terms of what. What we anticipate our needs are um in, in comparison to the, the funds that we've received, the additional funds that we've received. Um, that would not impact our operational budget.
Okay, so it looks like, so just so I'm clear, it looks like due to the grants and funding we're getting. It won't have an, uh, operational budget impact because everything's gonna be covered?
Correct, so currently with the, the CARES Act and Esser funds. Um, we've been able to um use that money to offset the cost for COVID-related expenses. But again, as Becky mentioned, that's just through the end of December. Um, so we are anticipating uh a potential budget impact. If money does not um come forward from the federal government or the state, state government in terms of. COVID-related expenses for the second half of the year.
Yeah, what I neglected to say is that those substitute numbers um that I was referring to, that's a twelve-week estimate. So that's looking at really the first, you know, quarter uh or third of the mon- of the uh school year. Um, so after December thirtieth, you know, looking at, at whether or not we'll have additional funds available to us. The Esser funds, as I said, are smaller. We will have until FY twenty-twenty to spend. Um, but again, it's a small amount of money and won't have as big an impact as that um school reopening grant money will. But we have in both districts, I think, um, we've tried to be planful um in terms of making purchases at the end of FY twenty. To help us um with any unanticipated um expenses that may come up this year.
Okay, great. That's really helpful. Thanks.
I'll just add that the one uh cost that we have not included, um, and we will do analysis is if we were in a hundred percent. In person, um, what the additional cost would be for transportation, um, with the current limitation of one student per bench. So we will, we are in the process of doing that analysis.
Greg, um, to the point of buses, um, the school start time task force, I remember that we did some, some. Counting of students on buses and weren't there, wasn't ridership actually very low? So do you anticipate us having to add additional? Bus tiers or buses?
So um ridership um in Northborough and Southborough was um. At the high school was very low, but Northborough and Southborough was more. It was a little bit higher in terms of ridership. Um, and Keith is looking at um ridership with. With Jean Pinto and it looks like, again, as he mentioned, that we, we are able to accommodate. Just in terms of Jean's efficiency and routing and, and adding some more capacity in, in terms of people power. Um, to be able to look at the routes and be more strategic about routing.
Thank you.
Becky, you're back, back, ju- back to the budget just for a second. I, I understand that. Uh, there could be a bus expense related to, let's, you know, kind of say full opening, but um. Is there any distinct difference between operating. Um, remote versus hybrid? That you, that you have a sense of, at least at this point, just in general?
I mean, I think that transportation is probably the obvious um area that we would be looking at if we were fully remote. Last year, we um achieved savings because we were not operating our buses. Um, you know, the other piece would be substitutes, uh, if we're not, um, if we're, if we're not in person. Then really the need for um substitutes and the nursing substitutes that we talked about, um, having those people in place would not be needed. I mean, you may still need to have, um, you know, occasional people substitutes depending on what's going on in a teacher. You know, in a teacher's life, but generally with the remote, I think, um, we did not see the number of substitutes that were required. Um, in the spring that we normally see.
Thank you.
I think I'll just add to that too, the um, the, the one of the areas we're really looking at closely is. Leave of absences for a variety of reasons from faculty and staff. Um, so again, I know Heather mentioned some of the leave plans and some of the, the, the. You know, some of the ways teachers could take a leave of absence, so that has a potential impact that we're doing an analysis on in terms of. What would that over cost, that cost be? And um, some of that is not included, included in Becky's analysis. Of, of what she shared with you, cause it's an unknown expense at this point.
I have um a, a question, not on this topic, um, but about school reopening. And so a couple of days ago, DUC came out with um the option for schools to um delay the beginning of school by ten days. And I know that I, I saw a couple of um questions in the Q and A. Um, I, so I didn't know if one of the chairs maybe just wanted to speak to this. Keith or Roger?
I don't think we know how it's gonna impact us just yet. We, we need to start negotiations with the Teachers Association. We need to evaluate. The impact on numerous fronts. Maybe, maybe Greg can add on to that.
Yeah, I mean, I think um to Lauren's point, the Commissioner of Education did um. Reduce the number of days on learning from a hundred and eighty to a hundred and seventy. Based on um negotiations with the Mass Teachers Association at the state level. Um, so MTA really was lobbying for ten additional days at the beginning of the year. For professional learning for teachers. Um, and the commissioner granted that, so. As a, as school committees, the school committees now have um ten additional days that um could be added. To the beginning of the year for teachers to engage in professional learning. So again, it's, it's further conversation with the committees around what that would look like. You know, so further conversation, but it is something we'll need to discuss in terms of school calendar.
I know that um, I know Jessica had done some research. Uh, I think one of the, one of the issues is. Um, most people that listen to many of the news programs assume. That it's just a ten-day postponement, but that, that isn't the case. Um, but, you know, however, we don't know exactly. How much it will be at this point in time.
I mean, I think that I will, in um, we did have a call with a commissioner today, of a Commissioner of Education today. With super, area superintendents and he, he highly recommends that we um. Implement those ten professional learning days at the beginning of the year, albeit it's, it's not his decision, but again. Um, in terms of what was negotiated at the state level and um. Again, thinking about some of the reopening needs in terms of professional learning for our teachers, it's something, it's something that we'll need to discuss and consider. Uh, advantages and disadvantages.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to move to the next part of the agenda?
No, this was an informational briefing, so um, I'm sure we could discuss. Further and we will um very soon um on this uh very complex issue and a lot of information, but. In the interest of time and the fact that it's eleven oh seven PM. We should go ahead and move on to audience sharing. And if the hosts can remind us the procedure with respect to. Uh, raising a hand or being temporarily promoted to share, I think that would be helpful.
So I think that um the best way to move forward with audience sharing is um. Is for a person to ask a question in Q and A, Keith, and then we can ask the question.
Well, we have.
The will of the chair.
Yeah.
Cathy, you're the host at this point, or Keith?
We have a hun- amassed at this point, a hundred and nineteen open questions. In the Q and A, which I thought we had decided we would kind of sort through and organize and respond to. Correct? So I think I would propose, and we can get Roger's input, that. Uh, those still present who would like to speak, uh, give, give some input. Not, not to ask a question they've already asked. I, I don't, we, I don't know if that's a good use of everybody's time, but if they would like to share. An anecdote or a personal opinion about um this matter, I think that would be most appropriate. What do you think, Roger?
Um, I, I agree and you, you know, audience sharing isn't a Q and A period. But what we can certainly do is any of the um comments that are made or. Issues that are raised, you know, we'll uh, we'll collect those along with um the Q and A questions.
Yes.
Find a way to uh, I guess sensibly, get this information out so that everybody really has a chance to. See the responses.
Yes, so I will be taking notes. I've already uh collected the, all the questions from today, open and closed. So if um somebody would like to ask, ask, that's a fair point, Roger, ask a question or share um some information or, or an opinion. Then they can do so and I, please state your name and address um and the town, since we have both committees uh today. Um, and we will uh, we'll take notes there and uh we'll follow up.
So in the Q and A, they have to put their name and address?
Nope, uh, actually, would we do a hand raise or a Q and A with their name and, that's a good point, so how do we get them promoted?
If they can raise their hand.
Yeah.
Then.
So there's Kathy Lee, for example, is has her hand, okay.
So I, I can promote Kathy Lee to a panelist.
And I would just ask that people be respectful of time. There are still about a hundred participants. And so if you could just um consider your fellow community member and allow them an opportunity to speak as well.
I think Kathy Lee unraised her hand.
She still has to speak.
She was just stretching. She was just stretching.
Her virtual hands. No, there were a couple of hands up earlier. I think people hit the button or, or whatnot, so. Yeah, so attendees, again, if you're in the, in the chat window, you can raise your hand if you would like to speak. If you have trouble with that, just drop it in the Q and A with your, with your name and address, and we'll, we'll grab you from, from either spot.
All right, we have Seth Bessler.
So I've asked many questions over a span of many months now and have gotten no answers whatsoever and feel that these are important questions regarding the health and safety of students and teachers alike. And I don't think that, from what I've heard, teachers are not even aware of a lot of your planning and haven't been asked a lot of the questions that are necessary in terms of their safety, what's going to happen if they get sick? Is this going to be taken against their time? Is there going to be, are there going to be enough substitutes for them? What about the safety of the students that have, you know, immune issues that haven't been addressed? You know, I, I think we've, we've touched upon some of these things, but you've also said that you're discussing things and that a plan will be applied and shared, but nothing has really been said.
Your address and town, please, Seth?
For Hamilton Road in Northborough.
Thank you.
So please look at all the questions that I've asked, even ones that have been dismissed in terms of something as, you know, maybe trivial to you, but, you know, a teacher that might be elderly that has to update their will. That's, that's a serious question that was dismissed in this, this forum.
Okay.
You're looking, you're looking at this all as, as a government level, not a personal level. You're not thinking about the way the teachers are affected by this. None of you are going into the classroom and risking your lives. You're all sitting in an air conditioned office away from students, not in a crowded environment. You're not in the thick of it and you're making the decisions, and it's completely unfair that you're not considering the other element. I'm disgusted by the way that you've acted towards this all. And I know a lot of other people are, too.
Okay.
Through the chair, are you all set?
Yes.
Okay.
So noted.
We have Kristin Lavout.
I actually don't, I, I put my questions into the Q and A and I'm happy to wait until we, you provide the summary back and we have the book of forms. I didn't think I, if I answered my, if I raised my hand, I didn't mean to. So sorry about that.
That's okay. We saw, I saw some of your questions. I've been capturing those, Kristin, so we'll follow up on those.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the next person?
Hey, Greg.
Hey, Greg.
Looks like Kristin is still here as well.
Hi, Greg. It's Kami Espacy. You guys unmuted me.
Kami Espacy. Street and town, please?
60 Richards, Southborough. You know, I just, I, I heard the comments from, I think his name was Mr. Bessler previously, and I, I don't envy the position that any of you guys are in, because I think this is a complicated situation. And I understand that teachers have concerns about risks about going back to work, but, you know, just to make a point that there's a lot of us doing jobs that we didn't think we'd necessarily be in the risk that we're in. And me and my husband both work in industries where we're public facing every day and we didn't have a choice but to do that at this point. And we're still working outside the home and we're still exposing ourselves. And so I understand that maybe that's not the job that the teacher signed up for, but unfortunately, neither did the people that are working in other industries, the grocery stores, Targets, Walmarts. So I don't envy the position that you guys are in. Thank you for the effort and time you're putting into this.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Kathy Palm Reed. I'm in Southborough, 34 Biblo Road. My question is regarding technology. So I saw that K through five will continue to use the Google Classroom, and I and my kids found that to be a very cumbersome format to use for the, ju- just for the remote learning. And I was wondering if there's any consideration or possibility to move over to the Canvas format for the other grades as well.
Think we, yeah, so we'll, 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 we'll make note of that. It's a good question. Thank you.
Yeah, I saw Greg nodding, nodding his head. He's taking notes there, so.
And, and Ms. Reed, is, are you, do you mean for that on a situational basis or for that age group, that K through five in totality?
Well, it looked like for the, the plan for the remote learning for six, sixth grade and above is already planning to go onto Canvas or they have been on Canvas. And it looked like the plan was to remain in Google Classroom for the, the younger years. And my, for example, I had a third grader last year and they had everything on this Google Slides and it was very, it was very difficult for him to even read what, what the, the handouts were. And then it's just difficult to kind of switch between different, even track the work that he'd done. Things would disappear or reappear, so. So I just, you know, it worked for what, what was needed, but I find that the system like Canvas is much more sophisticated and and easier to track assignments for both the, the teacher and the, the student. So I was just seeing if there's any consideration to, to make that possible for the younger years, too.
And would you be interested in that on just a situational basis? So
Oh.
For five students, you know, yourself, your, your children, or something for us to consider across the board?
Um, I think it'd be beneficial for, for all students. I think that would be a lot for a teacher to, to manage both Google Classroom and a Canvas format, but.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, thanks.
Thanks for sharing. Anybody else? Looks like Kristin's still with her hand up, but we know that she, she's all set.
So typically we have Laura Bryant.
Hello, I'm actually her wife, Elizabeth. I have a question regarding quarantining for staff and students and whether you'll be, you will be requiring a negative COVID test for reentry into in classroom participation. And if so, I'm wondering if you've taken into consideration that if there's a potential exposure and they get tested, they have to wait a few days for the test. Otherwise, there will not be enough of the virus to give an accurate test. And whether or not you are going to have procedures and education for families in the event of testing.
What street and town, please, Laura?
I, I'm sorry. I know lesbians. They confuse you.
Visual.
Five Jennifer Brook Road, Northborough.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to piggyback on Katie's question regarding technology. And I, I agree with her. I think having the same on throughout all grades would be more convenient for parents, because we have to take into consideration that parents are at different skill levels, and perhaps learning both would be very difficult, because I think that to assume that everyone can really speaks to our privilege. And we should really consider those who may not be at the same level as we are, as others. So I think having it the same across the board would make it easier for families who have multiple children. It will not be difficult for me with my one child, but I think that it's good to be empathetic toward those who may not be as technology savvy.
Those are all good points. Well taken. Anything else?
Nope, that's all. I just want to know about quarantining and how we're going to do testing. Will you actually require randomized testing throughout the school year, which I think would be beneficial, so we could have a base? Because you, if you're going with the trust in the honor system that you've prescribed, that's a lot of trust for me to put into other families to say, you know, my kid has a sneeze, maybe it's just an allergy or maybe you're asympt, maybe it's COVID, or maybe because of the, given that there are so many asymptomatic cases without testing, I don't know how this works. And I don't think it can be safe. So I would like to know what the plan is for testing and whether or not you're going to do randomized screening. Because asymptomatic cases are something we have to acknowledge, and that could be a real problem. And also, how many students will catch COVID before we shut it all down and concentrate on virtual learning? Which is where I think a lot of the money and time should be going into, providing the best virtual learning experience that our children can learn safely and hopefully be happier at home. So that's all. Thank you for your time. I want to say that I think overall, you're doing a fantastic job. I'm very excited for this team. I think you're all a bunch of very intelligent people, and I, I'm putting my trust in you to make the right decision for my family and other families in the community.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
I believe we have no more audience members who would like to share.
Okay. If any panelists or committee members have any final words, those could be entertained prior to a journey.
Yes, I would like to. So Lauren Bailey Jones, 11 Elmore Drive. So I think that it's just really important to let the community know that, you know, everyone here understands that this decision is very difficult and that we are taking, you know, all considerations. And we do really appreciate the audience sharing and hearing everyone's perspectives, whether they're different from our own perspectives. I think that's actually where we get the best conversations is when we listen to everyone's viewpoints. So I just want to say thank you, because this is going to be a difficult decision, and there was a lot of information tonight, and we have a lot more work to do.
Thank you.
A question to Keith and Roger. How do you plan on disseminating and answering the questions that have come through tonight's chat and also the ones that came in beforehand? What is the plan to get that out?
Well, I think we, I think there's a couple of different ways to do it. You know, one idea is like a frequently asked question, try to consolidate. A lot of these questions are the same questions. Some of them actually were, were potentially answered in the presentation tonight. So I'm not sure we made a decision, you know, on a final way to disseminate them, but I think putting them out in an organized fashion so that everybody has access to them is something that we'll do.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I agree with that.
Can I piggyback on that and just kind of hold us to a timeline for disseminating that? So Friday, 7:31 is when we plan to share the draft reopening plan. I think I would suggest that if we can use that as a baseline target, that no later than that, we should because having the reopening plans without the list of questions that we pulled together tonight, and even if the answer says, please see, you know, reference 1B on page 25, we can start there and then say that this is our, also a draft and maybe conclude that week of eight, three slash eight, seven, when we have those, the, the next forums that we can finalize that document. So I'm just presenting that as a proposal, Roger and Keith and Joan. We don't have to take it, but I would like us to aim towards that as a target.
Again, to piggyback on that, I'd like to suggest that it be a live document online, kind of the way we had the NSborough Connect, you know, area of the website. Maybe there's an area on the website where this could be a live document that is continuously updated and people can keep going to instead of a static document that gets emailed out once. That might be, that may be good.
You know, I think, I think the organization of the document is very important. We've got, what I see, 125 questions. I don't know how many are duplicates, how many were answered. But I think that some, some time put into organizing the best way to present these so that people just don't have to read 120, you know, if we can consolidate them and, you know, by groups somehow or other, I think any time we put into determining that is going to be well served. And if we lose a little time in getting the information out, but we, but we put that time into making it easily understandable or easily communicated, I think we're better off. But I haven't really gone through them all, so I don't know what to say about that yet.
And I guess we would have to decide if we want a Q and A that is just K through eight, because the region, if we wanted to do K through 12, the region is not meeting until Friday morning, eight to 12.
Right.
To 10. You can see, my point is, we're going to be there to 12 or 1 o'clock. So I wouldn't have the region, their question and answers until 12, 1 o'clock on Friday.
That's what I was thinking, a, a live document, like the way we had NSborough Connect. There were different sections, so we could have, you know, K through eight, nine through 12, ELL, Student Support Services, you know, kind of common questions around each of the main areas. That might be helpful. And also slightly related, I've seen a few people ask if there could be a forum, Greg, specifically for Student Support Services and ELL. I think that would be a good idea, if that would be something we could put together.
I agree. I think we've had some preliminary conversations about a Student Support Services forum, so.
Great, thanks.
Just, just a general comment, too, in terms of, we are working on a reopening website. It's interactive and will have a lot of information and can be viewed on a mobile phone. And so that, that is under, we're underway in terms of being worked on. So eventually, all these Q and A questions and can be added to that as another resource for families.
Excellent. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right. 11:30 on the dot. Entertain a motion to adjourn for the Northborough School Committee?
I'll make a motion to adjourn for the Northborough School Committee. Kelly Gannett.
Second, Joan Frank.
Entertain a motion to adjourn for Southborough.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. I'll take a real call for the Northborough School Committee. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Gannett?
Yes.
Mrs. Tagliaferry? And myself, Keith Bell, yes, passes unanimously.
Um, I'll take a, a vote for Southborough, Catura?
Yes.
Jess, you're on mute.
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes.
All right.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.